I see Councilmember Willie, thank you. Councilmember Way is here. Welcome back, Councilmember Moore. All right, so we will start up again. It is 8:23. The item is number 14 under Public Hearings. This is a subject of abatement of public nuisance from weeds or other fire hazards pursuant to provisions of our municipal code 9.08 and resolution number 20-136. It's a hearing for impacted property owners to contest the matter of proposed abatement. And I do have an earlier request for a bifurcation. I'm going to ask for guidance from our city attorney as to how best to proceed. I did not fully retain your recommendation. And so my understanding is Vice Mayor Chow would like to bifurcate as to the consideration of her property. Madam City Attorney, how best should we go about proceeding at this point?
If there's a recusal, the Vice Mayor should state it now.
Vice Mayor Chow, Chair recognizes you.
So I need to recuse the decision from my property. So I'd like to request supplementating the decision separately.
Okay, Madam City Attorney, Vice Mayor Chow properly brings forward a motion. Is that correct? Can she bring that forward with one of us motioning or seconding, rather, or does someone else need to make that motion?
I don't think you need a formal motion. I think as Chair, you can consider first the hearing on Vice Mayor Chow's property with an emotion to approve, including it in the abatement resolution. And then the council would consider the hearing for the remainder of the properties and then have a motion to approve the resolution.
Understood, understood. So Vice Mayor Chow, we will go ahead and consider your property under this item, please. You know, whatever is appropriate, perhaps turn off your camera. And-
Mayor, I do have a presentation, a quick presentation, if she would like to remain for that.
I think that Vice Mayor Chow can hear your presentation and can even see your presentation. But we will be proceeding under initial consideration of her home. Let's make the common presentation now. And then, once we conclude with that, we'll consider Vice Mayor Chow's property. And then we'll reopen it up for the entirety of the council to consider the rest after we have a motion on that property. So please proceed with your presentation.
Okay, so assuming you can see my presentation. The purpose of the weed abatement program is to prevent fire hazards and other nuisances posed by vegetative growth and the accumulation of combustible materials. The program is managed by the Santa Clara County Department of Agriculture. And our city code, chapter 9.08, requires property owners to remove or destroy weeds on their property for fire and public health protection. Owners are required to abate annually by April 30th and to maintain their properties throughout the year. The county prepares a report of all properties that have been noncompliant and provides that report to the city. All impacted parcels remain on the list for three years. If the parcels are found to be hazard-free according to the safety standards during that time, they will be removed from the list. The complete safety standards are enclosed in all mailings to property owners, but I have them listed here in general. The maximum grass height standard is six inches. Property owners should clear vegetation 30 feet from any structures, combustible debris under eaves of houses, on roofs and in gutters, and branches should be cleared 10 feet from the chimney. I'm including a couple before and after photos. On the left, a noncompliant parcel. And on the right is a compliant parcel. Here's a vacant lot. On the left is noncompliant and on the right is compliant. There are a couple options for the homeowners to complete the required work to abate. Option one, homeowner completes it themselves. Option two, the county assigns an authorized contractor to complete the work with the charges appearing on the next property bill. The county begins conducting property inspections on April 30th and through October. However, the parcel should be maintained throughout the year, as I mentioned. As part of the new city process, the county annual inspection fee is waived for compliant parcels. They must be abated upon the inspection. And any waived fees are billed to the city to cover the county costs to inspect the property. On December 7th, the county mailed a notice to property owners listed on the report indicating that their property must be cleared of hazards according to the safety standards by April 30th and also notifying them of tonight's public hearing to consider any objections to the proposed removal. The city also, as part of their new process, sent a reminder letter to abate by April 30th and also to maintain their parcels year-round. If council wishes to adopt resolution 21-002, ordering abatement of public nuisance, property owners on the report will have until April 30th to abate any potential fire hazards on their property. And the purpose of tonight's hearing is for impacted property owners to contest the matter of proposed abatement. And that conducts my presentation.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. I noticed that we do have a representative from the county Weed Abatement Department.
Yes, Mo Cumery, who is the manager of the Weed Abatement Program, is here to answer any questions.
Yes, and Mo, at this time, would you like to make any remarks from the administration of that program? Welcome.
The program's run countywide. Cupertino is a big part of that. We look at the properties during, mainly just during the fire season, which for Cupertino is April 30th through the end of October. But right now, we're having high fire season. So like your city clerk said, it should be maintained year-round. But our program is only going to maintain during that one period of the year. It's a long period, again, from April 30th to the end of October. But those are the only periods of time that we're going to enforce the standards and deal with fees being a concern for property owners. We did adjust, we do adjust the fees annually to ensure that they are cost recovery only. And you may have noticed that this year, the fees have gone down because we were able to control costs. So that's all I have for right now.
Great, thank you very much, Mo. All right, so let us proceed with consideration of this item. We're going to go ahead and identify the property located at 10175 McLaren to consider. I'll let my council know that the Vice Mayor is able to appear as a member of the public, of course, to discuss this particular item. But I may bring it back to Mo if you would like to make any commentary on that prior to any opening from the public on this bit of the segmented item.
Well, I think that I would first like, if the Vice Mayor is going to talk on this, I'd first like to give the Vice Mayor an opportunity to say her piece first, or the property owner, an opportunity to say their piece, and then I can respond.
That sounds good and consistent with the practice of the past. Okay, so very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on the address that I stated earlier? I believe it was 10175 McLaren. Correct me, anyone if I'm wrong. And so I'm not seeing any hands raised, however. Okay, so I don't see a hand raised in this context. And so I will bring-
Mayor, is this only for the McLaren property?
That is correct. We have segmented this. And so we're considering only that property right now.
So only public comments related to that property?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is, okay, so I'll bring this back to council as well as to our guests from the county. Mo, are there any comments on this before I entertain a motion?
This property was added in 2019. 2020 was, it was compliant. So it would be this year and next year, if it stays compliant, would come off the program.
Okay, very well. I'll entertain a motion on this property. Okay. So I'll remind my council that the recommended action from our city staff is to adopt the resolution insofar as this particular property is concerned, number 21-002, as well as resolution number 20-136, having conducted the hearing for that impacted property to contest the matter of proposed abatement. So is there anyone that would like to move the recommended action for this property?
So let me try this. I'll move to adopt resolution number 21-002. Should I read the whole thing? Ordering abatement-
You can just say so moved.
So moved, good idea.
Is there anyone who would like to second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Way, motions. Councilmember Willie, seconds. Any discussion on the item, please raise your hand. Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote? You'll need to unmute yourself, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries with Chow recused.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, Vice Mayor Chow, please feel free to return to our meeting as a participant. Welcome back. And so the other segmented portion is every other property that is on this list, with the exception of the one that we just voted on in our motion. At this point, are there any members of the public that wish to speak on any of the properties under consideration? I do see one hand raised now, two. The first hand I see raised is only identified as call-in user one. Call-in user underscore one. And so I will unmute you at this point. Welcome. And I believe if you're calling in, you'll need to hit star six on your phone.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, welcome.
Hi, this is Brent Bardslay, 10408 Menheart. The council should have received an entreaty from me dated January 2nd, which I discussed my experience with the weed abatement program. This is my third year. I remind the council that the council has three times ordered my property removed from the weed abatement list. Last February, the weed abatement manager said all the issues had been resolved. And also, I presented a petition last winter that five of my neighbors, long-term neighbors, have attested that they've never noticed any weeds on my property. So I'd like to have my property removed from the list.
Okay, thank you very much, Brent. Our next speaker is Larissa Troche. I apologize if I pronounced your name incorrectly. Welcome, Larissa.
Hi, I just had a quick question. I think I've submitted all the documentation on two parcels. I have the parcel numbered line 83 and 87 for 351916 Stevens Creek Boulevard. Is this an annual notification that I need to respond to? Or how does, I'm not sure how your policy works. I'm a property management company, so I don't exactly know what your procedure is. But it just raises the level of anxiety every time I get this notice. Is this something I need to look forward to every year? Or how does that work, Mo, perhaps?
I guess that's a question for you, Mo.
Okay, I can actually answer both of the speakers so far. Both Mr. Birdslay and this particular caller. We've been in transition from an old database system that we were having trouble with to a new one. And during that transition, the data got transferred over. It took properties that had been deleted or had been put into an inactive status and made them active in the new database. And that's why they got these letters. These are both actually inactive parcels. And so they're both being removed from the system. So I just verified both with Mr. Bardslay. And I had verified earlier, and I believe you have a written challenge for the second speaker in your packet already. So these are both dismissed parcels.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mo. Our next speaker, and again, I apologize for any pronunciation issues, is Hemalatha Yellamilly. Welcome, Hemalatha.
Hi, you can call me Hemer. This is the property picture at the time of inspection. You can see that other than the grass, the rest of the property is well-kept. What I'm trying to say is, it's not like we don't care about this program or the safety or regulations. It's just that during this time in March, April, the mower was not working and we had parents at home who were visiting us and got stuck here and were very worried with the COVID situation and not sure if we can get someone to fix the mower. It is a confusing time, so at that time, we were late on cutting the grass. But if you look at the second picture, this is how our property is. We keep it clean year-round. But that one, that month, during that time when the lawn mower was broken, we didn't get it mowed on time. So you see the grass has grown a bit, more than six inches. So what I'm trying to say is, we have been living in Cupertino for a long time. And this is the first time it is not compliant. And it's not like we don't care, we care. And because of the COVID situation where it is scary, the number of incidents growing every week, we were too scared to invite or get someone to get the mower fixed. And that is the reason it was not compliant at the time. If our inspection were a week later, you would have seen a different picture. We wouldn't be in the program.
Okay, Hemer, you have a minute left. Let me confirm with Mo from the county that he's aware of what your address is. I'm not sure if he mentioned the street name. Mo, did you catch the address of this property?
Actually, I spoke with this property owner earlier today. So I'm familiar with the case. The only thing I can say is my inspector was in the area on the 21st of May, three weeks after the deadline. Saw high grass and weed, took the picture, sent the notice. And this is your call.
Okay, okay, very good. Well, Hemer, you still have about 25 seconds. Any other comments?
I was thinking, maybe can you consider taking us off of the list? Because this is the first time. So you can understand that we usually keep the house, the yard, well-kept. And seeing the current year's fire problem, we will be extra careful.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We received your comment and your time's up. Our next caller is a phone number ending in 0747. Welcome. And you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. We can hear you. You can begin speaking, caller 0747. Okay, if you are speaking, we actually cannot hear you, unfortunately. And so I will need to go on to the next speaker. I will come back to you later if you would, if your technical difficulties resolve. Our next speaker is Matthew. Welcome, Matthew. I don't have a last name here.
Hello?
Hello.
All right, thank you for having me here. So I would just like to formally request my family's property to be taken off the list. The address is 698 Millar Avenue. It should be on the last page of that, of the list of properties. Similar to Hemer, the previous caller, and that we also don't know about this program that was in existence, although we totally understand due to the fire season and whatnot. But at that time, whenever the picture or inspector came, our property, we understood that our grass was pretty tall. We have already taken the steps even before we got this notice that we needed to mow the lawn and to remove all the fire risk, dried wood or grass or whatnot. And I don't have a picture now, but I could provide on a future, if needed, on a future date. That our property now, like, has, like, the grass has been cut since, for a long time now. And we would like to request that the property be taken off since at that point, it was, at that point, we did not, it was, it wasn't a good time for us. Our machine to mow the grass was also broken. But we did take steps afterwards to mow the lawn and to get rid of the long grass.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. Mo, is there any response that you'd like to provide to that at this point?
Well, I'll say that there are some differences between the previous caller and the property that Matthew has, which is parcel 37542011. You saw the picture that the young woman put up, that the grass was green, it was tall, but it was green. As I looked at the photographs, which, if I could figure out how to do this, I can share them if you'd like. The photograph that we have for Matthew's property, it's tall and it's dry and it is thick. It is a much more significant hazard than I think the previous property would have been. I don't think that, personally, I think that this is a more significant issue than the previous caller.
Okay.
So that would be my position.
Okay, thank you, Mo. Matthew, if you're still on, you still have about 20 seconds if you have anything else you'd like to add.
I just have a follow-up question because from the presentation, I just saw, like, so if I, if we do, if my property does get onto the payment program, if I do maintain it and make sure, you know, this doesn't happen again, the annual fee gets waived, am I correct in that?
All right, well, your time is out, but I'll allow the county representative to answer your question, which was if they're in compliance in the future, does the annual fee get waived?
That's a, that was a question for the city. That was a city's decision.
I can, I can comment. So as part of the new city process, if the parcel is abated prior to the April 30 deadline of inspection, and that could happen anytime between April 30th and the end of October, then that inspection fee will be waived and covered by the city. So it'll be waived for the parcel owner. The county will still charge the fee to cover their cost of inspection, but the city will then cover that cost.
And just to be clear, when does that abatement need to happen, Madam City Clerk?
Beginning April 30th and through October 31st.
Okay, so it needs to be abated by October, by April 30th?
By April 30th, but it must be maintained because the inspectors could come anytime between those, during that time, all the way through October 31st.
Great, thank you. And when would the initial notice come that there is noncompliance?
Noncompliance, initial notice would come at any time during that window that we saw noncompliance on the property. We can be there more than once for any number of reasons, including a call from the city code enforcement to look at a property or a report on another property, we may have to be down in that area and see it. So if we were to see it and it was out of compliance, we could send a notice in August that it's out of compliance.
An initial noncompliance notice, correct?
Well, the initial, yes, it could be an initial noncompliance notice. We could inspect the property in April or in May and it be okay. But we may have to go back in June or July and it not be okay at that point, in which case they could still get a noncompliance notice.
Okay, okay, very good. So if you're inspecting in June or July, for instance, our city process is such that as long as they are compliant by the following April 30th, is that correct? Until the following October, as long as they're compliant within that window? Or just-
Kirsten can correct me if I'm wrong. But as I understand it, if I inspect their property at any time during this year and at no time is it noncompliant, the city covers the cost of the inspection. However, if at any time during that, it's found to be noncompliant, the property owner pays the fee and any additional fees that would be applied with it as well. So the city only covers the cost of the initial inspection if for the entire window of April 30th to the end of October, that property is maintained in a compliant state.
Got it. Okay, well, let's go on to our next public speaker. We have three more hands raised. Our next speaker is Wen Ling Wen, welcome. Wen Ling?
Hello. We are in the property of 10251 South Tantao Avenue, Cupertino, California, 95014. So because of the COVID-19, and we are kind of scared to going outside and take care of the weeds. And we also lost our jobs. So it's a lot of difficulty during those times. And so, and we are not also, and we all did do some maintenance. Maybe it's not enough. Would it be okay to consider some better resolution like with the programs?
Okay, we're good. Would you care to respond to that, Mo? 10251 South Tantao.
Yeah, I was just looking at the picture on that as well. What I'm seeing is roadside area along a fence line that has high, very dry weeds, again, up against a wooden fence. It poses a significant risk of fire in late May. So we wouldn't recommend dismissal on this. We would suggest that it stay on the program.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments or questions from Wen Ling? You're still live, if you want to unmute yourself. Okay, seeing no further, our next speaker is Larissa. Yep, welcome, Larissa. Welcome, Larissa, you'll need to unmute yourself.
I'm sorry. Hello, everyone. Grateful and thank you so much. I have lived in this house for 25 years. This is the first time that I got it. And we were sick three of us. And my son was working two jobs. And it was COVID-19, nobody came out. And I was scared to death, so I never come out. Now I'm fine, you know, after eight months. So kindly help me because I really didn't have any bad record.
I was supposed to there so that our county could pull your address. What is your address?
Sure, 18880 Pendergast, Cupertino, 95014.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry for interrupting. Are there further comments or questions that you have?
Oh, no. You know, this is the first time and, you know, I have lived here 45 years and this house took 25. to- twenty-five. This is the first time that be done, you know, please, you know, forgive us, yeah.
Uh, thank, thank you, Theresa, um.
Grateful, sir.
Uh, Mo, any, any, um, response to one eight 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 zero Pendergast?
Uh, I'm reviewing the pictures right now and I'm going to be honest with you. I think that the inspector may have been a little overzealous on this one. I would recommend that we, that we dismiss the Pendergast property. The, the, the grass is not significantly high and it's completely green. So it's being watered. It's not posing a significant fire threat.
Understood. Okay, um, alright, so, uh, let's go on to our, uh, next member of the public who is here, Anil Shetty. Uh, welcome, Anil.
Yeah, hi.
Hi.
Uh, this is property one zero two eight one Johnson Avenue. Um, I've been living in Cupertino for the last, uh, twelve years and that, that same property. Every time, every year we maintain its property very well. This is during COVID time. We, uh, missed that, uh, in March, April timeframe. Um, but if you can see now also, if you can come and see, it is well maintained every time. So I just request you to, uh, give us a chance. I've removed our name from the list. I would really appreciate that.
Okay. Um, any, uh, commentary from, from Mo?
I'm, I'm getting to the photographs on this one.
Okay.
Um, this is another one where I'm again looking at dry grass against a wooden fence. Um, I, I would have difficulty with, uh, with suggesting that it be removed.
Okay, um, so let's, um, uh, there is another hand raised. Um, oh, but, uh, Anil, do you have any further comments? Okay, saying none. Well, uh, I, 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 I do have another hand raised from someone who's spoken already. Uh, Wen Ling, you did have a little bit of time left. Did you want to say anything else?
I have, uh, connect, I have technical connectivity.
I, I, I'm sorry, you're barely audible. You're gonna have to speak up.
Because, um, the connection difficulty, yeah, we are not, I'm not able to finish. I just wondering what's the conclusion, uh, do I, uh, do we get, uh, waived or?
Oh, uh, we, we did hear your comments. Uh, we'll need to take it back to deliberation as to your particular property, uh, as well as, uh, a number of others that have spoken. Um, but if this is just a follow-up, uh, we're, uh, going to be in the process of deliberation briefly. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so we'll bring it back to council. Uh, there have been, I count, um, I count, uh, let's see, one, two, three, four, five properties, uh, that have been represented by the public commentary. Is there anybody from, uh, council that would like to, for the purposes of opening up discussion, uh, bring a motion at this time? And again, I would ask that a motion be brought prior to our discussion. Again, um, a substitute motion could be made as well. Um, if there are no, um.
Um, I'll move to approve, um, the, well, I guess I'll move to approve the list, but then that's exempted the ones that Mo, uh, things should be should not be there. I think it was one eight 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 zero Arata Way.
Uh, Pendergast. I think it was Pendergast.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I searched wrong. Okay. And then there was another one that he think it was still green, right?
That was Pendergast. There was Beardsley and then there was the two from the written challenge.
Oh, right. The two, the one nine one zero six, one nine one six zero. The two managed by Larissa, right?
Yes.
You have the other property number? I only have one number.
And the, the other one was Mr. Beardsley. I don't, I don't remember his, or Bardsley. I don't remember the property. I, uh, number off the top of my head.
But that's, that's clerical, right? Do we need to put that into our motion? Um?
No, they're coming off the list anyway. They shouldn't have been.
Coming off anyway. So, so right now your recommendation is one eight 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 zero, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, council member, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Chow moves, uh, the staff recommendation with two resolutions, uh, with the removal of one eight 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 zero Pendergast, um, with, um, a, a reference to the, the material, uh, for the particular lot number. Uh, would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, I, I heard Councilmember Moore first, uh, so we're gonna, uh, have that as the official second. Let's bring it back for discussion. Would anyone care to, uh, discuss the motion on the table at this point? I don't s- I, I do see hands raised. So Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, so I think we just overlooked the, the other one, the Hemalatha two zero zero nine four that, uh, Mo also said was green and not up against a fence. So I think it's both the two zero zero nine four and the one eight 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 zero Pendergast that should, uh, not, that we should remove from the list. And then the remaining ones, while they're on the list, correct me if I'm wrong, but the city will pay the fee for this year. If it's in compliant from now on, the city will continue to pay it for those two additional years. If it's found to be non-compliant again, then the homeowner is responsible. So I think that's the correct, uh, way we set the program up.
Okay, I'm seeing nods from our city manager as well, city clerk. Uh, can someone vocalize the affirmation of that?
That is an accurate, um, description.
Because, because I think that helps those remaining, um, uh, residents, you know, that had the Johnson Avenue, the Tanta Avenue, the Miller Avenue, for which they weren't compliant and Mo felt that there really was a fire hazard, uh, dry grass, dry, not green and up against wood fence of some size, some type. But to allow the resident or to help the residents that because of this in the past, we've said that the city will cover the fee. So even though it'll stay on the list for two additional years, that, um, as long as their properties are in compliance, we will c- cover that fee. So it helps them to realize we, we just can't be, uh, not allowing the, uh, fire danger to be, uh, addressed, but that we're trying to, um, make it as, uh, as helpful for the residents of Cupertino, which we were told, uh, I think Saratoga and other communities can all, are also, uh, helping the residents out, especially when you hear their uh, difficulties this year of all years. Pandemic, uh, get repairmen out when you're trying to keep, um, uh, keep safe from, um, yeah, so I'll leave it at that.
Great, thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up next.
Um, yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, so when I was looking at the, the agenda items, um, the documents, it, it wasn't really clear to me where it was stated to a person who would get one of these notices that they could have the fees removed. And I just wanted to make sure if, if I missed that, um, that, that it was really clear to the property owners at the start that there was a way for them to, um, have those fees dismissed. And also if we can, uh, given the COVID situation of this year, um, just to act with as much leniency as possible, I, I personally would appreciate that, especially because you're looking at people who have economic hardships that and, and emotional responses to everything that happened this year. And I know even for myself, uh, yard work was not really, you know, on the top consideration. And, uh, yeah, I'm having to redo my own beds because of this, because they got, it became in disarray. Uh, and if there was some way with this process, you know, moving forward that we could remove it from council's property by property, um, considerations somehow. Um, and maybe we want to think about a way to not have this continue to come back to city council, uh, about people's conditions of their yards. Uh, I think that that, uh, would, would be great. Um, and lastly, I wasn't entirely sure with the, with the eighty-four dollars. If you're on the list and you clean it up that year between Au- April and October, are you on that list for three years? If somebody could just let me know how that is. Thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, so three questions from Councilmember Moore. Um, would, would, would staff like to follow up on that first question regarding notice to the public regarding the process of, of the city covering?
That, so the letter that was mailed from the city on January seventh did outline the new city process that, uh, compliant parcels would have that fee administrative annual fee waived.
Right. And, and who was this letter mailed to on January seventh?
It was mailed to all property owners on the list.
Okay, and was that in conjunction with notifications or was that a separate mailing?
It was in conjunction with, um, the here, the, it was a letter, um, outlining the public hearing date. Um, it also included the general process of the weed abatement program and, um, as well as that additional guideline.
Uh, very good. And then, uh, does anyone remember the second question? Because I, I remember it as being a question from Mo, but I don't remember what it was. I apologize for that.
I, I, first let me say that that mailing was separate from the mailing that I sent, which may be part of what uh, the council members looking at. Our mailings were forwarded uh, in accordance with the health and safety code, what the ugly notice that has all the one-inch-high letters and that's required by law. Uh, also, this coming to council is also required by law. Uh, we have to bring it to you annually. It's, it's not something we can, it's not something that any of us choose. We, we, we're not doing this because we just enjoy coming here and doing this. It, it's a requirement. We have to, you have to approve the program and, and we need that to move forward. Um, th- the idea about the y- yard, but doing this for, i- it's not a matter of how the yard looks. It's a matter of whether or not the issues that we see pose a potential fire threat. If a yard is ugly, that's okay.
Feedback, um, so let's, uh.
Okay, you still get feedback from me?
Nope, we're good now.
Okay.
But, but, but let, let me move you on because I, I think we've answered the second one. I want to give, uh, fair allocation, everyone. So there was this question about the eighty-four dollars. Uh, if they're compliant in this season, will they be put on to the uh, list for the next year? What's the answer to that?
Well, once a property goes on to the program, it's on for, until it has either three consecutive years of voluntary compliance or they do a build-in landscape in which they remove the risk of the fire hazard and however they build a landscape with the vegetation that, that they put in or other la- landscaping or hardscaping.
Okay, perfect. So those questions answered. I will go on to Vice. Thank you very much, Mo. I'll go on to Vice Mayor Chow, uh, who has her hand raised next. Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, so I guess first is the follow-up for that question. So if they are compliant this year, they, it seems like they will still be put on the list for three years, even if the city pays the fee this year. Then how about next year? If they are compliant next year, do they still need to pay the fee next year? Or would, could the city request that if they are compliant this year, that's not put them on the list for three years?
So the city covers the charge every annually. Every year that they're compliant, the city will cover that.
But they will still be on the list for three years. So then my question, and then my question is, can we just remove them if they are compliant this year for the first year? Let's just remove them because like a lot of them said, it's a slip. So why do we want to put them on for three years?
Let me ask that question in another way.
That's just remove.
We wanted to do a council, or Vice Mayor Chow's suggesting, would we have to legislatively alter that program?
Uh, no, I think, I think my understanding is we have the authority right here in this council meeting say that, okay, this property has been, is compliant this year. Let's remove them from the program. I think that's what this meeting for, right?
Well, let's ask, let's ask, uh, a representative from the county. Uh, Mo, your understanding of it, would there need to be a change in the law if in effect, we basically took people off after one year? After one year of compliance?
Well, it, if you took people off after one year of compliance, could you do it legally? Of course you could. Uh, the problem that you have is historically speaking, you have people who will do it the first year, but not the second year. Where we, we had, see this countywide. Uh, it, people will respond the first time because they got in trouble. Then they don't respond. If you take them off the first year, I can't address them appropriately the next year if they don't behave because they're not on the list. We have to go through this process for us to be able to do anything with them. Will you delay a process for us to be able to maintain a fire-safe condition? So y- y- you tie our hands if you do that. Can you do it legally? Yes.
What empowers you to keep people on the list in the first place for three years, however? There, there is ordinance that places people on the list for three years, correct? Once they are on the list, or is that just part of your policy?
That's, that, that's a, a county policy. The state law says that they can be placed on the program indefinitely.
I see. Oh, they can be, but they don't have, understood. Okay.
No, we have the choice and we find three years to be, people who do it for three consecutive years are consistent. People don't, who don't, we, we see that anyone for one and two years have a tendency to fail after that.
Vice Mayor Chow, any other questions or comments?
We have here, um, people who have been doing it consistently for twenty-five years and they have a slip during this year due to the pandemic. Then the question is, I think we should, um, not put them on for three years. That's just, uh, adding, uh, insult to injur- injury. So I think, I hope that if, when they are compliant at the end of, um, in August, let's consider removing them from the list, uh, permanently. I think that e- even if they are non-compliant the next year, of course, then we'll just, they will be add back on. Then we would know, right? It's not like it's adding anyone's fault. And, and because it will be on the list anyway. Okay. Um, and also it's, it, I find that, um, it's, uh, I hope that, I wish Mo can figure out a way to share his screen. And if not, can we possibly get pictures? It seems there are sometimes, uh, where you see two properties. One, uh, Mo says, okay, that one, it's green, it's okay. The other one is too close to fence. But maybe we'll have examples of what's good, what's bad. That might be helpful for people to, to understand, okay, where, why some are tall, the other are tall too, but then one is, uh, one is recommended, that should be off the list and other is not. Then another question is Mo mentioned, uh, um, the inspector was over the list on one of the property. Then I wonder whether the inspector might be over the list on other properties who is on the list, but they didn't come to complain. How do I find it out?
Okay, briefly, Mo, um, Vice Mayor Chow, you're considerably over your, your initial allocation of time. So let, let's entertain that question. Um, so Mo, is it possible that there are other properties on your list that are there that weren't, uh, spoken about tonight where the inspector was a bit overzealous?
Of course it's possible. But if a person's not contesting, it's a lot of, I, I deal with over two thousand, sometimes three thousand parcels in a year. I- it's difficult for me to go back and, and double-check every single parcel that we deal with to see if, if the inspector was overzealous on one particular parcel. Uh, I can say that from a technical standpoint on the one I said he was overzealous on, technically it was not compliant, technically. Technically. Looking at it from a standpoint, I still think it didn't necessarily deserve to be tagged, but it was technically non-compliant.
Okay, got it. So, I'm going to go on to Councilmember Wei, who hasn't had a chance to speak yet in this first go around.
So, so I suggest we do not interfere with the county's program because it's three years, it's the county's rules. But we are helping our residents if they are compliant for the next year, in the next year, while the city is picking up the fees, the inspection fees. So, I think we do our part in helping our residents and we let the county decides on, you know, what they need to do. As for inspectors, I think, you know, we all know individual inspectors might have different standards and they, some more strictly adhere to, you know, the rules and some more lenient. So, like Mo said, he can't go back to, you know, check everything. I think what our city, we do is we support our residents with the fees. And as long as they're in compliance for the next three years, you know, we'll pick up the inspection fees. So, I think that's pretty fair and good practice. And so, I'm suggesting that we do our part and let the county does their part.
Okay, Councilmember Wei, thank you. I will speak briefly and after that entertain any other, you know, kind of cleanup comments. But I, I think that the balance that we've struck over the course of several years as I've been on council is now, is now a wise one, it's a fair one. It's not something that, you know, if you're a taxpayer in Cupertino, you necessarily feel super great about if you've been compliant. Because essentially, a lot of these costs have been distributed over the 20,000 households or so, right? But I think that this is an important program. I think that, you know, we do have a very real phenomenon of, of climate change and there is, there are some years where the rain is very heavy. The summers are almost invariably very dry, no matter what. And those seasons are getting hotter, they're getting longer. So, we really do need to make sure that this program is funded by people who take it seriously. I think we made a very compassionate choice after many hours of discussion previously with regard to the city picking it up. At this point, I'm comfortable with where we are. I'm sympathetic to the idea that COVID has created a lot of different considerations for people. Some people don't even want to go outside, that's totally understandable. But again, if they're compliant going forward, hopefully they get vaccinated, you know, during the summer and they maintain compliance, the city will pick it up. Your neighbors essentially will pick it up. And personally, I'm comfortable with the motion by Vice Mayor Chow and seconded, I apologize, I forget the seconder, it might have been Councilmember Willie, that is on the table at this point. So, are there any other comments prior to taking a vote? Councilmember Willie?
Yeah. So, once again, I think I got overlooked on what I said. The Hema Latha 20094, you know, even Mo said that it's probably an overzealous inspector and all things considered. So, 20094 and the 18880 should be left off the list and all the other ones are on the list with the requirements that we've outlined.
Okay, well, let's bring that back to Mo. So, so Mo, that particular property, what I recall you saying is that it is at our discretion. I, I didn't really quite hear the same sort of idea that this was not really so much of an issue, but if you care to elaborate at this point, you know, I remember there was the picture of the lawn and the grass. So, what was your impression on that?
It was long, it was green, it was, it was exceptionally long in my opinion, it was green. So, many of the other ones we looked at were much worse than, that I looked at, were much worse than that. Of the ones I didn't make a recommendate, I didn't recommend one way or the other on this one. I said it's up to you. The other ones that I said, they were bad. This one I left to you and the one at, on Pendergast, I said I didn't think should remain. So, this is, this one was kind of a five, you know, six, six of one, half dozen of the other.
Okay. So, Councilmember Willie, at this point, would you like to propose a friendly amendment or have your own substitute motion?
True, I'd just like to have a friendly amendment to also exclude 20094.
Yeah, I agree.
So, who seconded it? Was it yourself, Councilmember Willie, or was it someone else?
It was Councilmember Moore.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, do you accept that friendly amendment?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Any other further comments at this point? We have one from Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, so one other question is, Mo mentioned that due to the moving to a new database, some properties were still, should be inactive, is still on the list. So, do we have a new list? Because the resolution, because I looked up, the first, very first property manager, that's supposed, that was there because of inactive data transfer error. And, but that's still in the resolution. So, are there other properties in the resolution that should have been inactive list?
I am going to have to go through the database with all of the records in there and verify that. And if there are, I will send that through to the city clerk to verify any additional removals from the list for that reason. But I will go through them personally tomorrow.
So, can we somehow include the revised list in the meeting minutes so that anyone who read, who come to this meeting later have a record of what properties are actually removed from?
Madam City Attorney, would that be advisable and could we tie our motion to that, given the fact that we don't have the list in front of us at this point?
Yeah, what I would recommend is a friendly amendment to, or to amend the motion to also remove any properties that the county identifies were erroneously included due to a data transfer error and to be removed as well. And then, when these properties come, and then they won't be on the list, it comes back to you for the, for the imposition of the fees.
And we'll attach that list, that newly revised list to the meeting minutes of this meeting, correct?
Link.
Well, it's a matter of public record, how do we?
Yeah, and I think that's almost a question for the city clerk, how they deal with.
Typically, and we often do receive amended lists from the county, we attach that to the, to the signed resolution. But I'm happy to add it as, as an addendum to the council minutes.
And, and I'm okay with, with that because the resolution will reference any, or your motion here will reference any amended.
Okay, should we, should I identify a date certain by which that, that list should be provided? Mo, do you have any idea of when you could provide that list so we can give comfort to members of the public watching here? That's not going to be like in six months or something like that?
No, but I'll need at least a week.
Like, well, what will be at the most, I guess is probably the more.
Can I make a suggestion? Why don't you just do it when, before council approves the minutes for this meeting at the following meeting?
Okay. So, we're on January 19th right now. That actually happens in a couple of weeks, I believe on February 2nd, if I'm remembering the first Tuesday in February correctly. Would two weeks be enough, Mo?
Yep, yes it will.
Okay.
I'll get your list before, before February 2nd, you'll have the amended list.
Okay, so I will go ahead and offer that friendly amendment to Vice Mayor Chow's motion as stated and discussed by city attorney and city clerk, our city manager, Mo from the county and ourselves. Vice Mayor Chow, will you? Okay, you do.
I accepted the amendment.
Great. And Councilmember Moore, do you accept that as the seconder?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Let us go ahead and take a vote on the motion on the table here. Madam City Clerk, if you could conduct the roll call vote.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
It's Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. Okay, so we are now on item number 15. The subject is municipal code amendments to update existing mobile vending regulations, including conforming edits to titles five and 13 in the code, adopting new regulations for sidewalk vending and compliance with SB 946. The application number is MCA-2020-004. The applicant is the city of Cupertino and the location is citywide. This has been continued from December 15th. And do we have a staff report on item number 15?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul Albert Salvador, Acting Director, Community Development. Tonight, we have Angela Sway, Economic Development Manager, to start our presentation. We also have several other staff members who Angela will introduce, who are all available to answer any questions. So, with that, I would like to turn it over to Angela.
Thank you, Director Salvador. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Angela Sway, Economic Development Manager. Joining me are Jeff Tamora, Associate Planner, Pew Gosh, Planning Manager, and Sarah Lucy, Deputy City Attorney. And I will go ahead and share my screen. This item is to consider amendments to the city's municipal code to comply with SB 946. And I'll briefly give some background and context for the item. So, again, the Economic Development Strategic Plan, EDSP, was adopted by city council in October of 2016. An EDSP is a multi-year plan to strategically position the city and its business environment based on a number of factors, including retail trends and opportunities for maximizing the value of the, the community. So, the motorized mobile vendor regulations was identified as a key issue due to its growing popularity at the time and the increased reliance by consumers. And so, as part of EDSP initiatives, this was a work program that was worked on by staff beginning of fiscal year 2017, 2018. Also, during this time, SB 946 was adopted by the state and went into effect on January 1st, 2019. And this established limitations to local regulations for sidewalk vending, which requires changes to Cupertino's municipal code. And prior to going to Planning Commission on October 27th, staff has engaged residents and businesses through a number of community meetings and information posted in the city's business newsletters and encouraging feedback directly to me. And so, on October 27th, this item did go to Planning Commission. Planning Commission adopted regulations for sidewalk vending only and did not adopt language relating to motorized mobile vendor regulations. And then during that meeting, commissioners discussed a number of issues, which included their concerns that regulations were too lenient and they were afraid that it would affect, negatively impact brick and mortar businesses in Cupertino, excuse me, in Cupertino, already struggling with the pandemic. And then also, there were concerns though of regulations being too restrictive, which would disallow services, you know, up-and-coming mobile services such as mobile hairdressers, mobile dentists and other similar types of businesses. Also, during that discussion and during that meeting, other concerns included, and we also discussed the differences between what SB 946 allowed and what the current city's municipal code allowed. Also, we discussed differences between sidewalk and motorized vending. And then, there were just questions raised in general as to why there was a need for regulating mobile vending and then what type of restrictions. So, the conform, again, the purpose of the mobile vendors ordinance is to conform with SB 946 and really to make sure that the city's code was consistent in terms of the terms that we've used. If you look through our municipal code, there were terms using solicitor versus peddler and then to be able to establish a process to regulate these type of uses. And then at this point, the goal, I'll just cover the SB 946, to give you more familiarity, the goal of SB 946 sidewalk vending is to provide entrepreneurship opportunities and economic development opportunities to a broader range of individuals. And it can contribute to actively create a more dynamic public space and then also allows the local authority to establish proposed regulations in order to ensure objective health and safety and welfare concerns, which would apply to time, place and manner of sidewalk vending. And so, here, just to go over what sidewalk, the different definitions, SB 946 defines sidewalk vendors as a person. And as you'll see, these are different depictions from a non-motorized conveyance. So, again, it could be a push cart, a pedal-driven cart, a showcase or a rack. And then here, again, with SB 946, stationary sidewalk vendor is a fixed location, defined period during day, removes the facility daily or the conveyance daily. Roaming sidewalk vendor moves from place to place and stops only to complete the transaction. So, in that case, it would be like a balloon vendor or someone selling popcorn. If they're moving, then they stop to sell to a consumer and then they keep, keep moving along. And again, for SB 946, there are some regulations, which include under SB 946, cities are not allowed to prohibit sidewalk vending or limit the number of vendors or to prohibit roaming sidewalk vendors from exclusively residential areas. Again, not allowed to prohibit stationary sidewalk vendors from parks unless there's a concessionaire agreement. So, for example, Blackberry Farm, because we do have, the city does control and maintain that concession stand, these sidewalk vendors would not be allowed at that particular park. And again, another restriction, or what we, the city is not allowed to, is to overly restrict hours of operation. But you, you can see that there are some things that the city is allowed to oversee, excuse me. And again, it's primarily for safety and welfare issues for the public as well as EBA requirements. And so, with that, I will turn it over to Jeff Tamora to go over the exact changes of the ordinance and, and what it reflects.
Yes, thank you, Angela. So, kind of just piggybacking off of the regulations you touched on, I'm going to be going over some of the draft ordinance language based on SB 946. And if we can go to the next slide? Thank you. And so, as SB 946 dictates, a local authority cannot restrict sidewalk vendors to operate only in a designated neighborhood or area except when that restriction is directly related to objective health, safety or welfare concerns. And notwithstanding that, a city may prohibit stationary sidewalk vendors in areas that are zoned exclusively residential, but shall not or cannot prohibit roaming sidewalk vendors. Therefore, as you see on this table, roaming sidewalk vendors are allowed across the board on all sidewalks, citywide, as well as in parks. Stationary sidewalk vendors are allowed on sidewalks in non-residential zoning districts and only parks if it doesn't already have a concession contract with another party. And if a sidewalk vendor enters private property, he or she would become a solicitor instead of a sidewalk vendor at that point. And next slide? So, SB 946 does allow setting hours of operation, provided that they are not overly restrictive in non-residential zones. So, to that effect, the draft ordinance allows both stationary and roaming sidewalk vendors to operate between the hours of 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. to eleven PM, uh which are the hours of operation uh allowed by right for businesses in these zoning districts. And roaming sidewalk vendors are allowed in residential districts from nine AM to eight PM. And these hours coincide with the municipal code's definition of nighttime to daytime hours. Um, and a fifteen-minute limit for uh any location for roaming vendors applies um to allow for transactions before they they move along. Next slide, please. So the proposed ordinance is exempt from SEQA under section uh fifteen three seventy-eight because it has no potential for resulting in physical change in the environment, either directly or indirectly. Additionally, it is exempt under section fifteen oh six one B uh three because it can be seen with certainty to have no possibility of a significant effect on the environment. Next slide. Um, in terms of public noticing, uh staff placed a legal ad in the newspaper. A display ad was placed in the newspaper at least ten days prior to hearing. The agenda was posted on the city's official notice bulletin board, and the item was posted on the city's um website four days prior to hearing. Next slide. Uh, re- recommended action is to uh introduce and conduct the first reading of the draft ordinance uh and find that the proposed actions are exempt from SEQA. Uh, adopt regulations to allow sidewalk vending in compliance with SB nine forty-six. Find that the regu- restrictions and requirements contained in the regulations are directly related to objective health, safety, and or public welfare concerns. And uh next slide, please. Finally, um, to also provide direction for whether uh draft regulations uh to allow and or restrict uh certain motorized mobile vendors uh be presented at a later time. And uh that concludes uh my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council this time? Uh, please raise your hand if you have any questions of staff and the presentation. Councilmember Willie.
So I, I think I saw on one of the early slides that the Planning Commission review had a three to two vote. At the very beginning slides there.
That is correct. I can answer that, uh, Pugh Gosh, Planning Manager, um, the Planning Commission's vote was a three to two on the.
There you go, three to two vote. And so when I looked through the presentation, I'm not really seeing much in the way of con- contention. What were uh the considerations that were uh causing two of the commissioners to feel something else was needed to be changed or done?
Oh, uh, Councilmember Willie, um, as as mentioned earlier, uh, some of the discussion kind of centered around uh concerns either being too lenient or um too restrictive um in regards to mobile vending um and and the mobile services. Uh, but and and because SB nine forty-six, um, it it, the city has to be compliant. Uh, Planning Commission felt comfortable to recommend uh making sure that the city's municode was compliant to nine forty-six. Uh, but they could not um a- agree uh in regards to the motorized portion.
And so tonight, though, is only focused on the uh sidewalk. And the final recommendation was to bring back the motorized. So I don't know why they would have a three-two vote.
If I may, um, Councilmember Willie, Pugh Gosh, again, I just wanted to clarify, the Planning Commission's motion to pass uh to adopt the regulations for side, the motion was to adopt regulations for sidewalk vending only and not adopt any regulations for motorized mobile vending. So that was the full motion, and as a result, some uh uh planning commissioners uh were okay with that. Most planning commissioners were okay with that, but a couple of the planning commissioners did not agree that that would be the motion. The motion still passed, and as a result, the Planning Commission's uh recommendation was only to adopt regulations for sidewalk vending, which is what is proposed tonight.
Okay, okay. I I can understand that. So it wasn't that there was a contention in the um recommendations for the sidewalk vendors tonight. It was a contention as to whether or not to include the motorized vendors.
Correct, absolutely.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Councilmember Way. Any questions, Councilmember?
Um, yes, um, do, do we have any feedback from the business community regarding mobile vendors or even motorized vendors?
Angela Sway, Economic Development Manager, uh, yes, Councilmember Way, during our outreach meetings, um, some of the concerns that um were raised, um, you know, get the, there were businesses or, you know, folks who did participate, um, they recognized mobile vending or um as a kind of a s- definitely a trend, um, something that's out there that is uh allowed by other cities. Um, and they just wanted to be able to understand what the um the process would be um in order to allow or to regulate uh these types of vendors. Uh, again, some of the concerns were um, you know, making sure that they were in compliance, uh, again, being able to provide um accurate sales tax numbers um. And then perhaps not being too close to existing brick and mortar uh businesses. So a a number of concerns came up um in and from residents. They voiced their concern or their desire to have mobile um motorized mobile vendors come to their um homes, to private property, um, and um be able to provide services, especially during this time of shelter at home, shelter in place, um, for example, dog grooming, um, they would like to have that service be available and allowed um at their homes. Um, and then the discussion also grew to, well, then, do we allow that on private property, or private commercial property? Um, so there there was a lot of discussion, um, and um those things were raised during these meetings.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Vice Mayor Chow.
So, so the state law require us to allow these uh ma- mobile vendors. Uh, it seems the key here is we are adding a registration process so that they are required to register in order to operate in Cupertino. And it seems you didn't really cover the registration process. And I wondered, do you have uh some slides on that? And uh how are we going to capture the sales tax? And how, and the issues raised uh by the residents, uh, as Angela said, for example, how do we make sure the ma- the mobile vendors do not compete with existing business? For example, having a coffee sh- coffee um mobile vendor right in front of a coffee shop on the sidewalk. How do we prevent that? Do we have that in our proposed regulation?
Uh, Vice Mayor, uh, good questions. Oh, and there's something, uh, I I do want to make clear that this, moving forward, this is for sidewalk vendors. So uh, these are not the motorized vendors. Uh, a- again, Planning Commission only recommended moving forward with adopting um the sidewalk vending only. Um, and as I mentioned, um, there was a a picture that I showed, uh, the conveyances ones that are mobile and and non-motorized. Um, and then in regards to um kind of the regulations or the the processing, uh, w- we would be coming, we would work on um developing that type of um, I guess it's the applying for a a permit or um a registry uh where the person would have to apply in order to be able to be a sidewalk vendor.
Yeah, and I could expand a little bit more on the the registration process. Um, I I think right now we are thinking of um the application itself for mobile vending uh as well as a business license uh and an annual registration fee. Um, uh, part of that application is gonna include uh getting details on the business. So description of the business, what types of uh of goods, uh, foods, or or where is being uh sold, the type of vendor, so i- if that's going to be uh stationary or roaming. Um, their hours in operation, the routes of operation if they are roaming, uh, location if they are stationary, um, as well as the size and and the type of facility that's gonna be used. Uh, and any other type of health permits from the county that may be needed. Uh, and in regards to your last question, uh, Vice Mayor, um, uh, we we don't have any uh uh draft language right now uh that addresses uh a pushcart coffee shop that may be within a certain proximity to a a brick and mortar coffee shop. Um, uh, so that's.
Maybe it's more like ice cream truck, maybe not, if it's mobile, I mean, not motorized, maybe more like ice cream truck. But still, it could be in front of an ice cream shop.
Sure, well, the the ice cream truck wouldn't be covered under under this um SB nine forty-six. Um, so it it would kind of be uh a pushcart ice cream, um, uh, ice cream vendor. So.
And so how, how we, I mean, the the regulation is going to have language that says you cannot be um be selling stuff that's to com- similar to existing retail business within a certain speed. Is that going to be, you have that kind of language, like within a few feet or something?
If I may ask a a clarified question, uh, Councilmember Chow, are you talking about the sidewalk vendors or are you talking about the motorized mobile vendors?
Sidewalk vendors.
So for sidewalk vending, is my understanding that state law prohibits us from having any of standards other than objective standards uh for a health, safety reasons? And so such uh distance uh for uh bin brick and, uh, considerations for brick and mortar i- in in the fashion that you framed it would not be possible. And we also have Sarah Lucy here, our Deputy City Attorney, who can help answer uh or uh that question if that was not answered accurately.
Oh, not allowed by this state law, I see.
Correct.
Well, I would, I would also imagine, uh, Vice Mayor, that a person who's selling ice cream in a pushcart or a somehow a mo- small mobile sidewalk vending uh cart is going to purposely not be near an ice cream shop, for example, or a like business, so that they can maximize their business. So they'll kind of go out into areas that either don't have that, in particular residential, or um other commercial areas without like business. That's what I would think.
Uh, let me relegate the rest of this over to um, you know, discussion uh at this point, since uh we we've gone over significantly on this. Um, Vice Mayor Chow, on your, on your time allocation for questions. So let let me go to Councilmember Moore. Uh, Councilmember Moore, you haven't had a chance to ask questions yet. Do you have any um for for staff in the presentations at this point?
Oh, gosh, I think the the only question that I recall having was uh making sure that the sidewalk with regards to safety, uh, making sure that the sidewalks would be clear for strollers and bicycles. And if um perhaps um someone from staff could ensure that that is going to happen. Um, that was really my only question.
Yeah, so the draft ordinance does um uh allow for a minimum four feet uh unobstructed path to travel um for for stationary uh sidewalk vendors.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. That's what I thought. I thought it was four feet, but I couldn't, I was flipping through it and I could not find find it um for some reason. And I was just hoping, uh, if you can locate it for me very quickly. Um, no, I found it, nine, got it, good.
Okay, great. Uh, thanks very much, Councilmember Moore. Um, you know, uh, there there was that um remaining part of the question from Vice Mayor Chow. So I I'll I'll use my time on questions uh to ask our Deputy City Attorney, Sarah Lucy, to follow up on uh Vice Mayor Chow's question.
Um, yeah, so I think what what Pugh said is right, that SB nine forty-six basically doesn't allow you to impose a a restriction that's not directly related to an objective safety, health, or welfare concern. And the statute is pretty uh explicit that economic competition or community animus doesn't count. Um, so, yeah, that you, m- m- you you couldn't, we couldn't impose a a limit on, you know, certain types of businesses within certain distances of each other, um, that 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 we couldn't justify that.
Okay, well, thank you for the the clarity there. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Um, if there are any members of the public that would like to make commentary uh on this item and the presentation, um, please raise your hand. I do have one hand raised at this time. That is Rick Kitson, welcome, Rick.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, councilmembers. I simply wanted to say thank you to staff for their work on this issue. And as uh Angela Sway had mentioned, we have uh chamber members who are on both sides of this issue. It is a uh nexus of uh economic change and changing business models. However, it uh comes to mind that Cupertino is well-known for uh significant community and regional events. And it might be very, very helpful if those events could be deemed time-limited uh concessions so that event organizers could in fact organize and design the event. If you can imagine a cherry blossom festival, Fall Fest of Ollie, and any of the number, countless other wonderful events that we have in Cupertino, they're bound to happen again. And it would be um a significant disincentive if these were in fact um just open markets rather than uh specific events uh designed for a specific organization. And that's my only comment and concern. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you very much, Rick. I don't see any other hands raised uh from the public at this point. And so that being the case, I will go ahead and close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to council. Uh, at this point, I'll entertain a motion for discussion purposes.
Okay, I'll make the move. I'll move that ordinance number twenty-one dash two 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 zero be read by title only and that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof.
My second.
Okay. Um, would you like to add in your motion, Councilmember Way, that you find that the proposed actions are exempt from SEQA, that you adopt the regulations to allow sidewalk vending in compliance, SB nine forty-six, and that you find that the requirements contained in the regulations are directly related to objective health, safety, and our public welfare concerns?
Okay, I thought that's um, the city clerk will read that. It's not that the case, or I should.
Uh, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just um adding the points that were in the recommended action.
Sure. I'll accept, is that a friendly amendment?
It's a friendly amendment.
Okay, I'll accept your friendly amendment.
And Councilmember Moore, as a second.
Second, and I just want to clarify because we we've, and probably all of us got this in the mail uh today from the, for the councilmembers. And it's a very, it shows a very brief uh first reading, which is, which is exactly what Councilmember Way stated. But um I s- I see that you've added on um the extra language from the staff recommendation. Uh, so perhaps, you know, and we can talk offline about how to um properly have those items stated.
Yeah, I I mean, what was throwing me off was the first subitem with regard to the proposed actions being exempt from SEQA. My experience in the past has been that we would want to specifically articulate that. And I just kept going with points B and C. Um, but, you know, I think at the end of it, you know, there's no harm in it, so, um, but but point well taken, and um, you know, I did that, yeah, I I just received that uh card that you're referencing in the mail as well a while back, so uh, okay.
Um, thank you.
But, yeah, you're welcome. Let let us go ahead and open it up for discussion. Vice Mayor Chow has her hand raised.
Um, I'd like to propose a friendly amendment for the second part of the staff recommendation on that we pr- the staff bring back proposal to regulate motorized vendors um in this year.
Um, okay, let us, let us, let us, okay. Uh, let us, let us consider the motion that's on the table right now. Um, and that actually is the second part of the recommended action. I I see that as a distinctly different um item. However, if you would like to try to add it to Councilmember Way's motion, uh, that that's certainly possible to do, I think. I just, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam City Mayor, I I I think we can provide direction as well as have essentially the first reading of an ordinance in one motion. Or would it be cleaner? Or would it be cleaner? Yes, you're nodding yes?
I think you can combine the two, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so Councilmember Way, will you will you accept that friendly amendment to add the second part of the recommended action to your motion?
And the exact words of the second part is to delay consideration motorized mobile service until a later date?
I don't know, provide the staff to bring it back to us, not to delay it. We're not considering it tonight.
Not delayed, because we don't have any proposal yet. So bring back a proposal to regulate motorized vendors.
Do we want to put a date or just?
In the next fiscal year, I think. That's the recommendation is as a work program item for next fiscal year.
Sure, I'll accept that.
Okay, I see Councilmember Moore shaking her head.
Yeah.
Are you not going to accept?
Maybe it's easier to separate it?
Councilmember Moore, you'll need to unmute yourself and respond.
I am unmuted. Thank you. Okay, so the problem I have with this amendment is that we are we are asking staff to do something. I don't understand how it is that we're going to come to an agreement about what they are to bring back. Because from the Planning Commission, and there there was, it was became a kind of contentious issue, whether you were going to protect the business owners that are here in Cupertino, how many, what types of mobile vendors you're going to have, when they're allowed to be here. It becomes very, very complex very quickly. So if you're saying that you're going to direct staff to come back, we're going to have to have a whole discussion about what we're going to have to direct them to.
We'll start with a study session so we can discuss all that which we haven't had a chance to. Right? That's the process, right? Usually we'll have a stop session, a study session to.
Mayor Paul?
No, I I thought I heard that in Vice Mayor Chow's friendly amendment to propose a study session. Is that is that palatable to you, Councilmember Moore, as part of a process?
I don't understand why we need to do this in this fashion, why it couldn't remain for the the first part that we're going to pass through.
Okay, that's totally fine. So I mean, it's provocative to decline to accept the friendly amendment as the second. So is that what you're doing? I just want to clarify that. You're declining to accept friendly amendment as the second of the original motion?
Okay, I would, yes, I was the second on the first. Correct, I declined to accept.
Okay, so right now on the table, we have the original motion with, you know, my friendly amendment as well as, I believe, another friendly amendment. But that friendly amendment from Vice Mayor Chow has been declined as a second. Vice Mayor Chow, at this point, do you want to do anything else procedurally? You know, not to make suggestions, but, you know.
So I, so should I bring this as a motion after the first motion?
No, I would suggest that. I think sequentially is probably a better way to do it. I mean.
Because I don't want to vote on this first, so I cannot say this is a.
I'm sorry, are you saying you don't want to vote on the motion on the table first, or you do?
I mean, I don't want to vote on the second portion.
Oh, got it. Okay, I'm going to, I was going to say that your option is perhaps a substitute motion, but that doesn't sound like that's what you want to do. So let's let's call the question. If there are no other comments on the motion on the table, I don't see anyone's, other people's hands raised. Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore, your hands are still raised, but I'm assuming that that's an artifact of our last discussion. So Madam City Clerk, if you could conduct a roll call vote on the motion on the table.
And would you like me to read, conduct the first reading?
Oh, yes, thank you. Please conduct the first reading of twenty one dash twenty two twenty and conduct a roll call vote on the motion.
This is the first reading of ordinance number twenty one dash two 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 zero, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending chapter five point zero four, Business Licenses Generally, chapter five point two zero Solicitors Chap, Solicitors, Chapter five point four eight, Mobile Vendors, and Chapter thirteen point zero four, Parks. And I will conduct the roll call. Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. So now, Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to introduce your motion?
Yes, so I would like to move that we ask the staff to bring back an item, maybe could, I mean, not proposal, I guess, but maybe a study session on motorized vendors. I think this, right, because right now in our regulation, it's not, it's not allowed anywhere in Cupertino unless it's a special event. So usually I see that in office parks, there are not only food trucks, there might be car oil change and dental dental services as provided. And right now that would not be allowed, and I think people are doing that illegally. And as I understand, also, if we allow that, we do capture the sales tax through the county. So I think that's something we should consider to regulate, consider whether it benefits us or not.
Okay, let's let's hold your discussion on the motion until we can get a second. Is there a second on Vice Mayor Chow's motion for the purposes of discussion?
All second.
Okay, excellent. So Vice Mayor Chow, motions, and Councilmember Willie, seconds to bring back mobile vending as a study session item. Any discussion? Please, please raise your hands if you would like to discuss this particular motion. I see Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised. Councilmember Moore?
Yes, I agree with bringing it back. It's a study session. But I am troubled that it was advertised in a certain way, so I would prefer it to be more neutrally suggested.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other comments? Councilmember Way?
Yes, I have a question. The motorized mobile vendor is not regulated by SB nine four six, right? SB nine four six is just for the other part.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other comments, Vice Mayor Chow or Councilmember Willie? Okay, I'll comment on this. I'm fine with bringing it back for a study session. I would like to ask a quick question of our fellow Councilmember Moore at this point. Councilmember Moore, was this part of Planning Commission when you were on Planning Commission?
Yes. Okay, so Mayor Paul, one of the things that I found was really confusing when it, when both items came together was that we were talking about, and as you're kind of seeing in some of the questions that you're you're hearing, that it became confusing, mobile vendors, mobile vendor on a sidewalk, mobile vendor in the street, what kind of mobile vendors in a street? Is it a service provider, food truck, something like that? And then you had vehicles coming to the home. It got all very, very confusing pretty fast. And then there was some contention about the mobile vendors in the streets. So I felt that it would be easier for us to talk about each part separately, what were the specific requirements of SB nine four six, and let's adhere to those, tweak it where we can, do what we could with it, and then look at the mobile trucks, mobile vehicles separately, and deal with, you know, whatever push and pull was going on in the community about that at another time.
Okay, understood. So Planning did hear this, and they, they did push forward a certain set of recommendations. So my comment on this would be, I'll be supportive of a study session to come back to our council. I think probably sixty minutes. If there's a desire for an hour and a half, let me know. But Vice Mayor Chow has her hand raised as well.
Sorry, this is a question actually regarding the sidewalk vendor. We are talking about sidewalks. How is that, the adopted ordinance, does that allow it inside the park? Or, for example, inside the City Hall Plaza? Is that included?
Okay, I'll allow the, I'll allow the question really briefly since it's.
Okay, let's bring this to staff to answer for this, for their questions specifically to that.
Yes, it does, it does allow vendors, sidewalk vendors on in public parks.
Okay, very good. So let us go ahead and and call a question for the motion on the table. Madam City Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, very good. Item number fifteen is concluded. Item number sixteen was postponed until March sixteenth. And now we're on ordinances and action items. Item number seventeen, the subject is to approve the updated Commissioner handbook. I would, yeah, I would ask, just as a point going forward, that we modify the language for our subjects to acknowledge the fact that we're under consideration here. So the subject should be consideration approval of the updated Commissioner handbook. It's just, it's a nicety, but I think it's an important point to make going forward. So is there a staff report on this subject, on this item?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Katie Nomura, Assistant to the City Manager, to present the update to the handbook. Let me share my screen. So the handbook is a guide for commissioners, and it's provided to them at their orientation after their appointment and is a reference guide for basic protocols and requirements. And as part of the work program this year, council requested that staff bring forward an updated Commissioner's handbook due to the fact that in the past, the Commissioner's handbook has not actually gone to council for approval and also to improve readability, to make sure that it gets more heavily used throughout the commissioners. So in our update, we shortened it from thirty two pages to ten pages in an effort to make it readable, easy to find the information you're looking for. And of course, as always, the city clerk and their liaison are available as resources to them. We also added at the end several links to additional resources if they should need them. And we also incorporated relevant recommendations that came from council and were adopted in January that improved commission engagement and standardized protocols. To gather feedback from commissions, we held a joint commission meeting on November thirtieth. And those comments can be found in attachment A. Many commissioners voiced that this was a more user-friendly document and that they felt excited that they would actually read it, so that was good to hear. We did make some adjustments for clarity that are outlined in the staff report. There were a couple commissioners that expressed concerns regarding too many periodic written updates. I believe there's kind of the update for the progress on the work program, the updates to the three items they're working on on the website and perhaps a couple other places. Also, there were actually a lot of questions regarding Brown Act and Rosenberg's that will be addressed in training that will be coming up this year, and we will be implementing that annually from here on forward. So that's the idea. We made this document more of a guiding document to get them initially, here are the things you should be aware of that will be supplemented with additional training to help guide them. And so we recommend that council approve the updated Commissioner handbook and provide any input. That concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you, Katie. Are there any questions from council? I don't see any hands raised. I'll bring it to the public at this point. Are there any members of the public in attendance that would like to comment on item number seventeen? Okay, there are no members of the public with their hands raised. I will bring it back to council for a motion prior to discussion. Is there a motion to adopt the recommended action to approve the updated Commissioner handbook and provide any input?
I move that we approve the updated Commissioner handbook.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, Councilmember Willie, motions, and Vice Mayor Chow, seconds to approve the updated Commissioner handbook. And are there any comments on this? Okay, as we're, okay, Councilmember Moore?
I attended the all-commissions meeting, and I really appreciated the changes that were made. But in particular, it was really great to have representatives across all the commissions in a meeting together. And to my knowledge, that hasn't happened in a couple of years. So if there is something of substance for the commission, the commissions to get together on, maybe do this every two years or something, go over the handbook, or discuss some issues that commissioners are finding that they have in common, I think that could help. It was just, it was just really great to have us all together on one meeting. And I thought the handbook, the new one, was was great, and the links were really helpful, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore, are there any other comments from council on this item? Vice Mayor Chow?
Okay, yeah, thank you. It's really much readable version. Thank you, Katie, Katie, for all the effort. I do have some question. So one thing is about the city work program. So the way it's written right now, it says, prior to the first draft of the city work program, each year, the staff will reach out to commissions to ask for recommendations of items to add. These recommendations will be provided to the city council for consideration. But ultimately, the city council will determine the final items. It's a little unsure what's the process because prior to the first draft of the work program, that's already in March. And that's already when the council already prioritized the items. And then, so when, how would the commissioners be reached out to submit items? Because the council goal setting is the end of January, right? Shouldn't they submit the items for council to consider even before January?
Right, so we make sure that we gather information on their input and ideas prior to the council ever seeing the draft of the work programs. That's prior to the actual adoption. Because if you recall, we usually have a study session or a special meeting just to review the work program. And when that work, that draft work program comes to you, just to discuss and possibly reprioritize, that is when you receive the commission's recommendations. So it's, it is during that process. It's, we give them to you prior to going to council for adoption. We typically will gather their input in December and January.
That's, that's how it happened last time.
Yeah, yeah, that's why here is not clear. Here it feels like they they won't be reached out in December.
We didn't specify which month because it could vary by commission. It could also vary depending on how our strategic planning process goes each year. But we make sure that we have their input for you when you are reviewing that draft.
I guess I kind of feel like I hope to get the commission input before the council goal setting. So that when we set our goals, we have some input from commissioners. Otherwise, I feel like every time we set our goals, it's like five council members with just whatever on top of our head. And then we set a goal, commissioners submit something else we didn't consider, and.
Maybe we just have a verbatim.
Something we might be like, oh, that's something I would even prefer better. So.
I think maybe we're, we're changing words. So you have, the council has set five goals. They're long-term goals, and they don't really change from year to year. If you're talking about projects, please let me finish.
Okay.
Talking about the projects that go underneath each goal, that is what each of the commissioners input into prior to council, considering all the items for the work program. That's how we did it in the first strategic planning process that we conducted when I.
There will be a council goal settings for the council to propose project.
So those are, those are kind of separate activities in the same thing. Your goals, you set your goals, you'll confirm your goals every year, but they're not goals.
Strategic goals, not project.
Correct. And then underneath there, you have projects that support your goals.
So when the council proposed project goals, for example, like the motorized vendor, maybe we didn't discuss today, maybe it's something I want to bring up, when the council should bring that item? In the past, it was a January goal setting. In the past, it was a January goal setting and that's not there anymore?
No, it will be. It's the same, it's the same strategic planning process I gave you last time. That's how you'll do it this time, only I'm hesitating because I've talked to each one of you about this current work program that we're in and how heavy it is with COVID. So what I'm trying to tell you is we will do an abbreviated process, but you'll still have an opportunity to see and provide input.
And then my question is, we don't have an input from the commissioners before our goal setting.
You, before your project setting, you will.
This is the, you know, it's only prior to the first draft of city work program. That usually is when a lot of things are already settled.
I guess I'm not understanding what you're saying then because we, we've done it. That first one that I said, you, you actually see commissioners' input.
Yeah, so let me, let me interject. A fair amount of time, so let, let me, um, and, and I don't want to shortchange the amount of work that we did collectively here. So, so Vice Mayor Chow and the city manager, as well as Katie, over the course of two thousand nineteen, we, we met, I, I think it was at least a dozen times. And these were very pithy meetings. They were not easy to go through at all. We came up with a set of subcommittee recommendations. I pulled that. The subcommittee recommendations are included in today's meeting materials. I'm looking at page four and I, and as I read it, I remember that we did deliberately keep that not specified as to date. And so item number thirty, staff will reach out, this is the last sentence of it. Staff, staff will reach out to the commissions and audit committee prior to the first draft of the city work program to ask for recommendations of items to add. And so, you, my understanding is that last year was really kind of the first year that we had the opportunity to do that because we didn't really approve these subcommittee recommendations until late in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. However, last year was very unusual. It, it was actually, you know, pretty, pretty quick. And so my expectation was always that this is the first full year that we would have had to be able to implement the subcommittee recommendations. Of course, last year was highly unusual and we've had to allocate bandwidth to a, a number of different items. But, you know, personally, I'm satisfied that we do have a staff that is in alignment with what we talked about over many, many hours in two thousand and nineteen. And, you know, this, this particular sentence that I'm reading that's pertinent to your concern right now, Vice Mayor Chow, I, I, I do remember that we were wanting to impart a certain degree of flexibility in terms of saying, look, you know, you, you need to reach out to the commissions prior. And, and I would, you know, recommend that we go back to this set of subcommittee recommendations because they were just so thoughtfully rendered. And, and there are other aspects of it that will, that do speak to what your concerns are. And, and I'm not just trying to, you know, say to, to you in any kind of way to mollify your, your concerns or try to abbreviate, you know, the, the, the length of, of your commentary. I, I'm also saying to, to staff, you know, we did say on a quarterly basis, we're going to visit this. We did say on, on the spreadsheet that we have for the work program, put in an extra column, the commissions and committees, you know, we can identify possible synergies over the course of the year. So I think this is a, this is a really good document. And, and so I just, I just commend it to all of us and I just recommend that we remind ourselves of, of the work that we did over the time there. At this point, however, Vice Mayor Chow, since you have had a fair amount of time. Let, let me, let me get to the other, the other council members. Let me get to the other council members. I'll come back to you. If anybody else wants to make a comment at this point with regard to the motion that's on the table.
I'll put, I'll write down an edit and propose it later because right now it's written from the point of view of the staff, not from the point of view of the commissioners.
Okay, so what, what are you saying? That the, the handbook is written from the point of view of the staff?
This paragraph is prior to first draft, the city staff would reach out to commissioner. This is written from the point of view of the staff.
Okay, I, I understand.
I would like to know when I will be proposing up items. That will be in December. This is something the commissioners should know, so I'll write something up.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I want to also remind you that, you know, prior to our efforts, there really wasn't cohesion among our, our various commissions and audit committee in terms of, you know, trying to, trying to keep in sync with the council and the idea that we do have advisory, you know, bodies here that, that, that I think would be optimized in terms of, you know, their productivity and the various ways in which, you know, the, the different groups, you know, conduct their business. But could really use some, some guidance as to, you know, just set procedure, just as a basic procedural rules as to, you know, when is the work plan defined? How does it, you know, kind of relate vis a vis to what council is doing? And, and so having been on a commission for seven years prior to council, now I, I definitely appreciate the work that you put into, you know, kind of thinking about how this works. But on the ground level, I mean, I absolutely agree. I mean, a, a, as a Parks and Rec Commissioner for seven years, I often didn't really have a strong sense of, you know, how does this fit into the council work plan? And how does it relate to other things that are going on in the city as well? So, um, but let me go on to any other council members that wish to make comments on the motion on the table. Okay, I, I, I see no raised hands. So Vice Mayor, if you would like to continue on your comments, you know, please, you know, feel free. I, I see the, the city manager has her hand raised. Would you like to make a comment at this point?
Yeah, I'd just remind you also that we also, for the very first time last year, published that flow diagram. So not only does council, but commissioners know exactly which step we're in and when they're going to be consulted for input. So this is, this is simply, if, if you recall, the original reason that the subcommittee was formed and put this together when I first came in was to communicate expectations of council's expectations of commissioners and provide them some guidance. This is not the whole document that incorporates how this process works or how this process works. It's a codependent document, right? So that's what I would say. Each document needs to stand alone. And in this case, the flexibility part that you're talking about, Mr. Mayor, with regard to either December or a lack of discussion on the timing, would be then pointed to the strategic planning process for that particular year. Let's say we had to shift it for, for some reason or the last thing we want to do is then go back to say we're not in, in compliance with the document we just put in or that we have to go and change it. That's why originally there was some flexibility put in there. About this period of time, commissioners would be consulted by staff to provide their input into this giant process that starts, you know, in step A. Just, you know, there's other, there's other companion documents that we're using.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised.
Oh, yeah, okay. So for that paragraph, I'm thinking, it should, it should read like this. City council approves an annual city work program to guide the work of the city. The commission is will propose recommendations for the work program. Maybe by a certain time, these recommendations from commissions will be incorporated to the first draft of the city work program each year. And then, of course, ultimately, the city council will determine the final items of the city work program. It should be something like this. Because the, the right now, the way it's read, read right now, it's for the staff. The staff will reach out, will do this. It's not the commissioners. How would the commissioner know when? So they are, they know, they have a role in the city work program. They can provide recommendation.
All right, this is, this is what I can do. I, I'm sorry, you know, I, I need to cut you off here because I, I just, let's not get into elaboration and justifications here. Because I, I think we know what your point is. I can propose as a friendly amendment, the language that you recited and then the city clerk can go back and capture that language with the exception of when you muttered maybe by a certain time. I don't think that language should be inside of the handbook because it's just an ellipsis, okay? I, I would propose that we not identify a particular time this year. If we feel like after an iteration, after a year even, but personally, after a couple of years, you know, we need to identify a time in order to kind of keep to a particular schedule, fine. You know, let's, let's go ahead and do that. I will propose as a friendly amendment, the language that you proposed a, a moment ago without the maybe by a certain time part.
That's good.
So will you accept that?
Can I just have a clarification point? It sounded also like you changed the sentence where these recommendations will be provided to the city council for consideration. You wanted to change that portion?
I didn't know. No, she, she read that sentence.
Oh, so I'll, I'll share screen. Um.
Why, why do you do that? Because it's probably.
Share screen later. But there, there is another item, okay? There is another that, right now, the language on page nine, it's a, it says, if you meet with any individual outside of the public meeting, you should disclose the content of that meeting in the public meeting to again ensure that everybody is aware of the facts and have similar information upon which to base their decision. This kind of requirement is usually necessary. The extra ex parte communication, a term I learned the first year I was on the council, is only required when we are making quasi-judicial decisions. Because usually we have a lot of communication with other people. The item may or may not be on agenda in the future. And usually when it's a policy decision, so many discussions, I could not possibly capture everything I've discussed with others. So this requirement to disclose extraparte communication usually is required only for quasi-judicial matters. And now we are adding this, that we are requiring this for every issue. I wonder how to implement that.
Oh, where, where, where are you?
Uh, page nine.
And, and what subpoint, what paragraph?
Um, it's a second, it's a first para, just first, first, page nine, the first paragraph. It's part of a continuation of, from last page.
It's under meeting, section J.
I see. You're talking about the first full.
Draft commission, yeah, the, the first full sentence.
And so what are you proposing? That we delete that? If you meet with any individuals outside of the public meeting, you should disclose the content of that meeting in the public meeting to again ensure that everybody is aware of the facts and have similar information upon which to base their decision. Are you, are you suggesting that we delete that sentence?
If we like, we could remind them. I think in the original handbook, we do require that they, they do this for extras, for, for quasi-judicial matters.
I, I'm not, I'm not getting an answer here. Do you, do you want to delete it? What do you want to do? Well, what are you suggesting?
I want to clarify, this is required only for quasi-judicial matters.
Okay, so you, you're thinking about.
If, if, if we are, if we don't clarify that, then I would like us to clarify how are we going to ask people to, to disclose this information.
Okay, first full sentence on page nine, would adding the phrase for quasi-judicial matters in front of that sentence, uh, work? I, I want to check in with the city attorney on that. Is that consistent with your understanding of, of the requirements for disclosure? The legal requirements for disclosure?
Right, I, I, we could add a sentence at the end that says this is required for quasi-judicial hearings or for hearings on quasi-judicial matters. I think the idea was that if, if, even for legislative matters, if, if people are gaining facts that aren't in the record, they, they should disclose them, but it's not required.
I, I, I think adding the sentence saying that this is required for quasi-judicial matters at the end of that paragraph makes sense because then it actually, it actually imparts a, a degree of optionality to the prior sentence. Right? Because basically, this is something you should do and you should still do it because it's an open communication. But in terms of something you have to do, here's where you have to do it. Is that, is that?
Yep, I agree.
Yeah, because otherwise it's impractical. How do I disclose everything I've ever talked about anyone about?
Okay, okay, let's, 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 please, you know, once we put a punctuation on it, let's, let's, okay. So for that paragraph, you're proposing that we add the sentence, for quasi-judicial matters, this disclosure is requirement. And, and perhaps instead of opening up a new sentence to make it clear, at the end of that sentence, make it a semicolon and then for quasi-judicial matters, this disclosure is requirement. Okay? Oh, and someone is very helpfully putting this up on the screen. All right. For quo, this, for quasi-judicial matters, okay, this is required for quasi, quasi-judicial. Okay, good, 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 good. How, how you had it was great. Whoever is typing that? Is that, is that Katie? Yeah, okay, great. All right. Um, are you okay now, Vice Mayor Chow, in terms of the modifications with regard to draft handbook? And I will, I will say, you know, I think we needed to close this. If, if there's, i- i- if there, if there are, if you have a litany of nagging concerns, I, I would say, you know, let, let's, let's get these modified that you've already identified and then find a next iteration. Because I think a, a fair amount of work has gone into this and we can, you know, pick it up in the next season to, to see what works and what doesn't work.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Okay, well, I'm going to go on to Councilmember Wei who has her hand raised. Councilmember Moore also has her hand raised. But Councilmember Wei?
I just want to comment that this is very good process because, you know, commissioners now can be trained, that they need training. And I, I do have, I think the staff initiates and for commissioners to have input on the right time and so that we could, they can meet before the council decides on the project. It's really good because you have to think about commissioners, my coming half-time, half, halfway through it. So I really think we put staffing in, in taking care of this procedure is really good. I, I kind of think the first amendment is a little, it, it's not as clear as what can be done because you, you have to remember commissioners, they, if they're new, they're, they'd be there just one, two years. They, or they coming halfway, it's hard for them to know the timing. So I really think the, the original language is really good. That, that's just my comment.
Okay, and, and how do you think about the second modification, Councilmember Wei?
I'm okay with that, but I think people want to ask, people will, even I have to ask what's quasi, quasi-judicial matters. Okay.
Okay, so Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised as well.
Okay, so I heard the word, uh, will be incorporated. The words will be incorporated on the first amendment. I disagree with that. The second one, it just felt like this, the, this process was running on far past the five minutes we were supposed to have. So I, I hope that I'm allowed a great deal of time should I want to pick through an ordinance in the future and go line by line. I hope that you indulge, indulge me on that as well. So I would like to see the original language and the change on the second part. And, and frankly, it just read like a, a step away from transparency, which we want. So you might have a, a commission which is talking about a trail, for instance, and people who are coming to that meeting might want to know who each one of those commissioners had spoken to and who are they being influenced by when they're making their decisions about that, that item. So that's where I'm coming from. So will staff, please tell me what the, the changes are here.
Okay, so procedurally, the, the second of the motion did not accept any friendly amendments. And for that matter, the original motioner didn't accept the friendly amendment to the extent that the second change was, was, what was suggested. And so, you know, i- i- in, in an effort to achieve consensus here, what I will do is I'll, I'll withdraw that original friendly amendment and I'll ask the motioner, which I believe, was that Vice Mayor Chow or was it somebody else? Madam City Clerk, who made the motion? Who seconded?
It was Willie and Chow.
Okay, Councilmember Willie, will you accept a friendly amendment to make the modification of the last sentence on page nine of, of the, of the draft Commissioner's handbook as we had placed it on the screen? And that's the only, only change in this friendly amendment?
Yes, I'll accept that.
And was it Vice Mayor Chow was the seconder?
Yeah.
Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, will you accept that as a friendly amendment?
So you mean the, the one about the work program?
Um, the, the one about, about your quasi-judicial comment.
Oh, the quasi-judicial comments. And so right now we are adding quasi-judicial comment, but please, yeah.
The modification, yes, uh.
Yeah, but please add a footnote, what's quasi judicial matters?
Uh, no, I'm, look, you know, ca- Vice Mayor Chow, you can't change. These friendly amendments as we're kind of in midstream, so, uh. So 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 can you accept it as a second on the the sentence that we put on the screen there? If you want another friendly amendment, fine, uh, you you know, but in terms of. You know, kind of offhand saying, you know, let's add another footnote, we don't have that.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, okay, great. So right now we have a motion on the table. Uh, it's the commissioner's handbook as a- as as provided to the public. Um, and it does have this this one modification on page nine, top of page nine. Now, um, Vice Mayor Chow is asking for a footnote to be dropped. Uh, with regard to what a quasi judicial um process is. Is that something that, uh, we could add? Uh, Madam City Attorney, do you do you feel that you could provide that kind of uh definition?
I believe we have that somewhere already, maybe I'll ask Katie no more.
Was that in the commissioner's handbook or was that was that in our subcommittee recommendations?
So it's in, um, we have an additional resource for the commissioner's handbook, uh, online policies and other. Resources and we do have imposed restraints in which we do define what a quasi judicial matter is.
How about you drop a footnote and you reference that document? Uh, and 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 refer people to that, is that? Is that acceptable, Vice Mayor Chow, in your your minds? Okay, um, okay, uh, Councilmember Willie, as the uh original motion maker. Will you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
And just formally, Vice Mayor Chow, do you accept that as a?
Yes.
Okay, a friendly amendment. Okay, great. So we have a motion on the table. I would ask that we vote on this. Um, and I I think, I think we should kind of look at this as the journey of a thousand miles. We've gone nine hundred ninety nine point nine miles, let's not get stuck, you know, interminably at the very end. Um, because we are years ahead of us. I mean, we can, we can, we can modify this later as well. Uh, that that's what I ask. And and so that by by way of that, I'm just asking that we call a question.
Can we, can we still vote on this amendment first? The city work program.
The city, oh, whose whose screen is this? I'm sorry.
This is mine. So the first one is the original paragraph. That shows the first draft of the city uh work program. That prior to the first draft, staff would reach out to the commissions. It I'm modifying that to read, the commissions will propose recommendations for the work program. To be incorporated in the first draft of the city work program each year.
Okay, I was hearing from council, or at least a couple of council members, that they didn't have the appetite for this particular language. Um, and I think it was the second sentence that you have highlighted here. The recommendations from commissions will be incorporated to the first draft of the city work program each year. Um, so. Uh, raise your hands, uh, Councilmember Way.
Will be considered, I guess, not not totally incorporate.
Uh, uh, okay, Councilmember Way?
Um, yes, I I still think the original language is good. And, uh, because we simply cannot re- to me, I don't think common sense tells me. We will not be able to incorporate everything every commissioner represents into our work program, and I think. Go ahead, that's okay. I I just think we should keep the original language.
Uh, Councilmember Moore?
I agree with keeping the original language. However, when I was requesting to see the other portion which was being changed. I don't think that I was looking at staff's screen, so before we, before you call the question. Uh, I want to see what staff says, uh, that text is, okay? I don't, I I don't.
The staff.
I don't believe, yeah, I want the staff to show me.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, I'm sorry, hold on, hold on, keep keep sharing, um. Vice Mayor Chow's screen, um, since we're on that right now, let's let's circle back to. What what Councilmember Moore is is talking about in in a moment. So. Um, let me ask, um, Councilmember Willie, are you supportive of the language that? Councilman, that Vice Mayor Chow is suggesting here? Uh, that we change the sentence. And the original to the two sentences that she is providing on the bottom paragraph here.
I I like. The uh sentence from Vice Mayor Chow in the sense that. I truly believe we should be relying heavily on our commissions. If we're not gonna rely heavily on the commissions, then, you know, what's their real, um, pur- purpose? The first one says, you know. Reach out to, but no, I I think it needs to be more definitive than that. Do we need to rectify tonight? But I I do like the sentence, the second one better. Um, we do, we really should be leveraging the uh. The commissions are comprised of the residents of Cupertino. They're not paid staff. And their recommendations for the city work program are really going to emanate. From the residents of Cupertino, not from a business perspective. So I like that one better. If we if we can't get, um. Uh, concurrence on that tonight, you know, then maybe we we do it as a uh update. But I do like the second one better.
I I I hear you, uh, understood. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Willie and, um. Let 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 me revisit the other councilmembers. I I I would like to get consensus on this, um. Vice Mayor Chow has modified the second sentence. Uh, it it's no longer a mandate. The recommendations from commissions will be considered. In the creation of the first draft of the city uh work pr- program. Um, you know, it it's in the passive, uh, considered is, uh, identified. Uh, there's no mandate of, um, every item identified will be in there of the first draft. Is this, is this workable for, uh, let's start with, um, Councilmember Moore. Now that the modification has been made by Vice Mayor Chow.
I see no reason to do it.
I mean, is my question.
It I don't, I thought it was fine in the original, um, the the alteration in the second. I see no reason to, um, make that change. It's it's not providing enough difference and changing the direction to make it worth our while. And it will take a staff time to change this. I mean, so it's not it's not free.
Well, okay, uh, so so thank you, that I I'm I'm hearing a no there, uh, Councilmember Way.
Okay, so so here it is, um, we are still listening to the commissioners. Is I worry about putting this on the commissioner to initiate. I think the staff needs to initiate. Cause staff is the one who knows the timing. So if you just put like this and and I just feel that. We are still on the first sentence, that it will. The commissioners' voice are still being heard and will be added to the recommendations for our cities' uh work programs. So I I don't see the difference in why. I see the burdens on the staff to reach out to the commissioners is more appropriate. Because the staff knows the timing, they know what to do. You put this on the commissioners, they might not even initiate if they don't know it's the timing out of it. So I am fine with the first language.
I got it, I got it. Okay, so, uh, this is what I'll commit to you, Vice Mayor Chow. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and support the original language here. Um, but I'm gonna pocket the language that you're putting there. I'm I'm gonna observe the process this year. And if it seems like, you know, more definitive language is is required. In order to, um, exhort our staff to reach out to the commissions in good faith and reflect that in the first draft of our work program. Um, then I I'll commit to you that I'll revisit this and uh and and support modification next year. Now let's go back to what Councilmember.
This is commissioner's handbook, not the staff handbook.
Yeah, but we're 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 approving this. We 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 are approving the language to it, so we. Uh, have within our purview, as you can see by this exercise, uh, the ability to modify the language. So Councilmember Moore, uh, made a request that she wanted to see the language that was up, uh, on Katie's screen. With regard to the page nine modification, uh, and and so that will stand as the existing motion. Um, can you see, can, are you able to see that? This is required for quasi judicial matters and add a footnote for the imposed restraints document, okay?
To clarify, uh, Mayor Paul, um, so if if you had. It for my example for, um, the Bike Ped Commission. Um, perhaps there would be a discussion about a trail. Okay, so, um, what if one of the commissioners had spoken to. Various members of the public that would be impacted by this trail? Would that, uh, because they're they're making recommendations, would they then not need to? Mention their ex parte communications? Um, likewise, I mean, we have some some businesses that could be impacted by trails. Would they have to speak about that or not? I think the answer is they don't.
Let me answer the question this way. Whether we add this red language or whether we do not add this red language. The content of the first part of the sentence is still a should. Uh, which to my way of reading is this is something you should do. We're not telling you that you must do it. So I I I think this this language at the end clarifies. The point that there are legal requirements in which this must be done, and that's a quasi judicial matter. However, um, we're really trying to provide best practices here. In an effort to, um, provide good public process and open disclosure. Um, so so I i- i- in my way of reading this, this is actually a clarification. Um, a- and also serves to, uh, re- really help to define the parameters of what we're talking about in this last sentence. Um, you know, it's 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 an encouragement, uh, to make these disclosures. But but I don't I don't read this, you know, in even in the original language as creating a mandate.
Excuse me, Mayor Paul, um, I think that if if the point is it making, uh, the statement about quasi judicial matters. Then when it is with regards to the planning commission, I would make this language more strong. Um, so the planning commissioners in particular are are reminded of this. Um, rather than not indicating, you know, who this is. Who is going to be subject to this? So if you if you want to put this in and talk about it, um, make it super clear, um, who falls under that.
I I would say. Add disclosure, you know, this is required, let's just say this disclosure is required for quasi judicial matters. I mean, I I think the. The issue with specifying is that you may end up not encompassing everything. Um, you know, e- e- every situation, but lo- you lo- let's have the city attorney speak to that. As to whether we need to get more specific.
I think there was an effort to try to simplify this document and, um, to have the details come out. If as required in other resources and in consultation with the city attorney for specific issues, but. It's up to the council how detailed they want this to be or not. I don't think it's a legal question of how what you put in there or not right now.
Imposed restraints document. Katie, where can members of the public find this imposed restraints document?
Okay, sorry. Um, so at the end of the document, we have a commission resources folder. Where we do have the imposed, uh, restraints document and at the end of it, we do discuss quasi quasi judicial proceedings. I can display that if you would like.
Yeah, I I mean, I think, I I I see it now, um, but if I'm just reading the handbook. I I I think you should say it in the commission resources folder, because.
Right, I think that was the purpose of the footnote. I could also just put it in the sentence if that is more clear.
Right, no, no, uh, i- if that's gonna be captured in the footnote, that's that's fine. Okay, so imposed restraints. I just want to take a quick look at this. Uh, imposed restraints, conflict of interest, public records laws. Individuals serving on the audit committee, bike ped, fine arts, housing commission, library commission, parks and rec. Planning, public safety, sustainability, and tick must file a statement of economic interest. Oh, that's the the conflict of.
Is it in a different document, Katie, that we linked? I'm not seeing it in the imposed restraints right now, the definition of quasi judicial.
Yeah, it's a number, uh, or not number, but letter I, quasi judicial proceedings.
Oh, you know what? My printer ran out of paper and so I didn't get that.
No, I mean, letter I, there's, this only goes up to letter H.
It's, so is it not in the linked document, the full? Maybe that's the issue.
It is, it may be something that we can address with the city clerk and our IT team to make sure that it's coming through. I just downloaded it, so and my version does have I, I can share that.
Yeah, I mean, I downloaded as well. My my version only goes up to H, it's a.
Oh, okay, so maybe it affects the time that you accessed it.
Well.
Can you see that?
Mayor Paul, may I, a quick question?
Uh, ca- Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. Um, so who beyond the the planning commission out of the commissions, um, makes quasi judicial decisions?
I can't think of an example right now.
Yeah, I I I kind of didn't think there were any, um, and, uh, we get briefed on that. Um, uh, several times over. So I'm not sure that even the addition of the red line is necessary when you are training the the commission. Um, you know, with the city attorney, with the planning commission academy and the 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 information that we're given. Um, they they should know that. Uh, so. I I'm not sure we we need to even add this in. Um, and I like that you, uh, have the statement, um, that they should, people should, you know, like I'm asking, you should. Provide transparency, um, to the public, even if it isn't a a quasi judicial decision like. Um, the the example I gave you about the bike trail.
I mean, I I understand what your concern is. Um, so so don't get me wrong, you know, just, you know, because i- if I'm not, if I'm not. Ultimately voting, you know, in this direction, I I I would like to try to get us to, uh, consensus. Uh, on on these modifications. I thi- I think the the concern you raise is is a bit more of a a stick, right? I mean, it's really more of a, you know, do this, you know, disclose it. Um, and let's not add ambiguity to it, let's not add like, you know, kind of a shade of, well, you have to do it here, so maybe you don't have to. I I I think, I I I I'm okay with the language that, um, Vice Mayor Chow is is adding to it. Um, but let me, let me just revisit this. Vice Mayor Chow, after hearing this discussion, would you be okay with going back to the original language? Would you support that?
With the original language, my question is how do you, how are you asking people to comply? For example, suppose for safe and dark sky is being voted on today. So Kitty, how would you disclose all the discussion you have ever had about a missed topic? And Way, how would you disclose that? Are you keeping a list of everyone you have ever?
Mayor Paul, should I, can I talk?
Uh, y- yes, I I thank you for observing that procedure. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilmember Way.
Okay, so, um, so this is a commissioner's training. It's a book for them to be trained. It is really best practice when you are dealing with an issue, you talk about where you got that information, like Katie said. So I don't, if somebody forgets, we're not gonna hold him or her responsible. So it's a training process and I think it's good to have the, I I like the original language. You know, advise them, this is the best practice that you should do, but even if they don't remember, since it's not a quasi judicial matters. It it probably doesn't matter, we're not gonna like break your brand, who did you talk to? So I'm just thinking the training, um, this handbook for the training commissioner is really good. I I like how it's being awarded. I like how it's being awarded.
Let me clarify, okay?
And Planning Commission seems to get the second training, right? So.
But the current language is sounds like, okay, before I make any comments, I need to use my five minutes to talk, to make a list of 20 people who I've ever talked to and what they said. This is what I read from the current language. But what Wei is saying is, okay, if I want to make my three points, then I should disclose these three points I heard from whom. So I only make, I only need to talk about these three points, and if I heard it from other people, I disclose who I heard it from.
Oh yeah, I'm cutting you off. Let's hear from Councilmember Moore. She has her hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So one thing in, for our procedure, when you start, after you finish the study session or you've finished the staff report, or actually even before that, you could be asking, were there any ex parte communications? In fact, the meeting flow that I was given has a part where I specifically would ask for ex parte communications. And you are, you're supposed to make that request, and then we talk about who we spoke to. And that's supposed to be part of our process. If we haven't been following it, then that should be followed because that's something for transparency's sake we should be doing. And it's probably good practice for the other commissions to be doing that as well. But, you know, again, that's up to, I guess, the council if they want to have that type of procedure. And to provide a flow chart for the meetings in the future might be pretty beneficial. Thank you.
All right, through the chair, through the chair.
We are talking about.
No, 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 Council, Vice Mayor Chow, you're not raising your hand. You're not asking me to speak. So don't interrupt. This is not a free for all. All right? Would you like?
I was asking them questions.
No, no, I'm just telling you, do not interrupt people. Speak through the chair. All right? All right, I'll recognize you, Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, sorry. So ex parte communication was for quasi judicial matters that has very limited scope. Everything have to be put on the table for that decision. But when we make policy decisions, a lot of times, like Bird Safe, it goes on for many meetings. And we might be talking to people for over one or even two years, like for general plan amendment. You might be talking to 10, 20 people. How are you going to disclose everything? I know that, that we have public records requests, we have all these things. But then you are saying that everything I say, I have to tell where I heard it from. I might have read from 10 different articles. So how are we going to do that in practice? It's not really possible, right? And if someone really are having some ex parte communication, they really don't want you to know, they are not going to tell you. So it really serves no purpose.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised. And I just want you to know that after one more set of comments, I'm going to be calling a question. Whatever motion is on the table, I'm requesting that we vote on it. All right, Councilmember Moore.
All I was going to suggest is that the city attorney address what the vice mayor was mentioning there about the requirements for ex parte communications for city council, and that's something that can be taken offline for city council members to know what they need to disclose. And also have a, I might suggest that we have a recap for the Planning Commission and a reminder for that commission for what they need to disclose there as well.
I'm going to call a point of order there because the disclosure requirements of council are not on the table here. These are, this is the Commissioner handbook. My interpretation of what Vice Mayor Chow was saying is, when she say I, when she said I, I think she was transposing herself into the, into the position of Commissioner or an Audit Committee member. Correct me if I'm wrong, Council, Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah.
But, okay, so, so, City Attorney Minister, if you want to answer that question very briefly, fine, but I don't think it's related to the topic of our discussion right now as to what our requirements are on council in terms of disclosure.
Yeah, it's the same whether it's Commissioner or council. And so it's required for quasi judicial matters. If you've, if you're making your decision based, if you have received information that is not otherwise in the public record, you must disclose it and where you got that information from. For legislative matters, it's not a requirement, but as this language says, that you, it's best practice to note that. I would put the emphasis not on who you've met with, but this second clause that says to ensure that everyone is aware of the facts and have similar information. So the emphasis is really if you're getting information that isn't otherwise in the record, you should let everybody else know about that so that they can understand it and consider it too, so that they are hearing the same information you're hearing. Oftentimes, when people meet with constituents, the constituents are sharing information that is already in the record through comments they've made or it's the information in the staff report, and that's less important to share.
Thank you. Thank you very much, City Attorney. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, so could City Attorney clarify for the public what is quasi judicial? And why, for quasi judicial matters, because of the limited state scope, I think it's practical to require disclosure of ex parte communication. But for legislative matters, if you are requiring people to disclose everything so that everyone know the same thing, then every commissioner is going to take 30 minutes to talk about everything they have ever discussed with other people. We are not, we cannot limit, say, you'll have only five minutes. So how, in practice, we can implement that?
Okay, last question. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. City Attorney, brief answer. How is someone?
I think the brief answer is it's not being required in this handbook. It's being suggested. And I would ask, and I would suggest that when people interpret that, they focus on any new information they've received and are using to make their decision that other people don't have, which I think we often do, and it's part of the discussions.
Okay, well, I'm going to make a last call. We do have a motion on the table. We do have a second. And so if there are no further comments, if there are no other procedural asks, I'm going to ask that the city clerk conduct a roll call vote on the motion on the table.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Very good. That was a great discussion, and I don't want anyone to feel deflated by it. I think a lot of the suggestions were really good ones. And they were all very good suggestions. And I would say that the nuggets of information, for example, such as suggesting that commissions take in as practice, you know, asking for disclosures, those are great. I really appreciate the comments. So thank you very much for all the thought that's gone into this. We are completed with all of our enumerated items on our council agenda now. We do have council and staff comments on future agenda items. I'm going to be setting a limit on this. I think it just needs to be concise. It needs to be with the commentary and some suggestions of future agenda items. So three minutes at the most, everyone. Would anyone like to go first on this? I don't see any hands raised. Councilmember Willie.
So trying to be real brief, so number one is the G5 cells in neighborhoods. Can the city manager update me as to when that is going to be on our agenda?
I guess I need clarification, what? A study session or something?
Well, we've got so many emails from residents about their concerns of G5 being pushed in residential areas specifically by Verizon.
Yeah, so let me give you a status first.
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
Okay, status first is that there's four sites that got, excuse me, pushback, and you're right, it's Verizon. I can't list them all, but we have them categorized. And each one of those is being worked for a different location, don't know where yet, by Verizon, along with city staff at the behest of those residents that live in that area. One of them's Tulalay, one of them is Chilton, so there's four of them. I, and thank you for asking, Councilmember Willie, I forgot to update council. I did have a conversation with Verizon last week, and we spoke about them not submitting any more, any additional applications at this time. I also asked them what their status was in our commercial zones. And while they felt like their, the commercial zones around here were kind of already done from their perspective, they agreed to focus there if there were a few more they wanted to put up. So no more residential zones, no more further applications in residential zones. So that means the current ones that are being appealed, I'll call it, by community members are being reviewed right now.
Yeah, and you know, I'm trying to make this real quick, but I still think it needs to come back to council. The, when they say that the commercial area is already finished, do they have a cell every 300 feet in commercial areas? No, they don't. So I think there's a very big misnomer about how, how close together these 5G cells have to be. And that greatly affects the residential area. That greatly affects the residential area. So I do think it needs to come back.
And the other thing I was asked to do, which I thought was a good idea, is I'm putting a matrix together of all the surrounding cities around here.
Great, yes, that's right.
And kind of what the status is in each one and what's happening in each one with regard to 5G. I did publish a little bit in my Friday update last week, but that's emerging information. So that's what I have now. As far as stuff coming back to council, I just, I'm at a loss for what more we can say about it because you've had four study sessions in the time that I've been here. You've modified the guidelines this one time, and it seems to have prevented us from creating a prohibition, which is what other cities have been sued for. So I feel like we've threaded the needle. I also provided a very comprehensive email to council right now that you could, if you were trying to put the education out there, send to other people that had FAQs. It had FAQs from Berkeley. It had a connection to our webpage that had the four study session taped right there. And I am, I will follow up with our new council members because they were going to go dig in through that stuff and make sure that they were fully up to speed as possible before.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off. Councilmember Willie, do you have anything else that you wanted to bring up?
I'm going to quit there for tonight, but when did you send out that package so that I can go and refresh my memory?
It was a while ago. I can resend if you'd like me to.
Yeah, would you resend when you do the new council members resend?
I will just resend it to all council.
Yep, okay, that'll be it for tonight.
Councilmember Moore has your hand up next.
Okay. With regards to the G5 with the cells, I'm a little concerned about the corner of Stevens Creek Boulevard and Wolf and how that change happened at that intersection because there was an alteration of the lane there. So I'm curious about when does a modification to an intersection need to have perhaps further noticing of the area because it affects people all driving through that intersection? That's one. I don't know if the upper level balcony code has been changed, but there was an item that came to city council last year regarding, I believe it was last year, regarding a very large upper balcony. And if we, if that ever had been changed, because there were some problems with that. And I'm going to mention again, this has come back a couple of times. Can we get the lobbying ordinance going? And just for moving ahead, if we can have some additional trainings for commissioners and city council members, you might want to attend them as well, getting into more complicated meeting policies, following both Rosenberg's rules and Roberts', if we have to encounter that on some of these outside committees that we're on as well. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Great, thanks for the great suggestion, staff. Anybody care to address Councilmember Moore's points?
I could do that. I can do it in part. Rosenberg's rules is going to be part of the training. I mean, and what you'll find is it sometimes is a little confusing if you're in other bodies, which you are. Some of them use Roberts' rules still, and some of them will use Rosenberg's rules, but can be stylized a little bit. So it'll be slightly different as you go to each one of these different committees. We are prepared to do Rosenberg's rules in these upcoming series of training. Roberts' rules, we were not prepared to train because we don't use them anymore. So it doesn't make any sense to train people on that. As far as the light pole you're talking about, it's Stevens Creek and Wolf. It is a light pole that was legitimately reconfigured there. It just happened to be right when we were doing that modification to the lane. It is a light pole only.
So there's no, that huge thing needed to be designed that way?
Yes. And I think I sent you a little more detailed email on that, too.
Okay, I'll hunt it down. Oh, it's huge.
Talked about lobbying. We are moving that forward. It is getting a little more complicated, but we will bring it forward as soon as possible, for sure.
That's not a work program item, right?
No, it's not. It came over the, it came off the dais, but we do have it on a list of future items that we keep the list of. And so we are actually working it, but yeah, it's.
Okay, so one last item, Mayor Paul. I don't, I don't know if there had been a change to the balcony ordinance because there was a project where it was essentially being used to make a really large second story.
In Modavista. It was a house in Modavista, is what I recall.
Right, and there was some talk about the ordinance change.
We didn't change the ordinance, if I recall correctly, and that person has not come back.
Okay, so just something to think about if we want to do that in the future.
Okay, is that, someone remind me, is that on our work program or is that a potential item to add to it for the next year? I honestly don't remember. I remember it being brought up during that item, and I thought it was a good idea. I just don't remember what our follow up was to that. Okay, so we'll look into that. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Chow, you're next.
So can we add an FAQ for Lehigh and Stevens Creek quarry? I think we all had some questions that's not answered. And this is a project that's going to be ongoing for the next one or two years. So maybe have an FAQ for some common questions.
I believe we have FAQs posted to both websites, but here's what I want. I was going to send an email after this meeting to council. If you have any lingering questions from this particular session, please send them to me and I'll consolidate them and get them to Roger, who will get them to the county to answer. And then we'll post those.
Great, yeah, I'd like to know the answers, too.
Just send me the, send me an email with the questions because we didn't get all of them. And I know you had some leftovers, and so did Councilmember Moore.
And then for the small cell issue, as I remember, December 15th, at the end, we got, I think, almost four or five council members all want to revisit it because I think the community members, Peter Chu, and many others pointed out the inconsistency of our regulation right now, since we require 100 feet from playground and, well, it's 20 feet from bedroom windows. And we don't have ordinance right now. Right now, we only have a regulation, I believe. At that time, all four council members said, okay, let's revisit. So if, no, the question I want to ask is, okay, now that it's an item that's requested by all four council members, or maybe five, if the staff is deciding this is not necessary, what should be the process? Because I did. No, I need to add. I was also expecting it will come back, like the community members were asking, when is going to be on the agenda? And now I'm asking out.
Can I provide some?
One more time, Vice Mayor Chow, okay, you're done, right?
Yeah.
Okay, City Manager.
So at the end of the December 15th session, yes, there were multiple people asking for another study session. However, I don't think that's going to actually do anything. So the compromise in the interim. So, the compromise in the interim before we do yet another study session was for me to consolidate all the five G information and give it to you because you really ha-, it's complicated. So, you really must read through everything and make the connection back into our administrative guidelines, which are just as strong as any municipal code. We are adhering to the administrative guidelines. There aren't any inconsistencies in it. You must read through all the FAQs. There's even a connection to the, we mod-, we took out the FAQs that we saw from Berkeley, and we, we put those in there too. I will resend the comprehensive ones so that you all can look at that first.
There is inconsistency. Sorry, there is inconsistency even with our order.
Can I just say, from, instead of talking about substance, we talk about whether getting additional information from the city manager is sufficient or whether somebody would like to ask to have a new item placed on the agenda and?
I would, I would still request it to be placed on the agenda because I don't think the city manager has authority to determine whether there is inconsistency, whether the, the ordinance needs to be made consistent. And that's, then the, the council has to decide. And we, John and I have, I think, maybe Katie or Han Wei has requested that. If they change, they're my fight, but that's something they should decide, not.
So, so there's one request from Councilmember Chow to have an additional study session, and if there's a second, it'll go on the?
And I second it.
Right, and so then it'll go on the future agenda items for the city manager and the mayor to schedule.
Okay, that's processed, and, um, similar to.
In the future, please, don't change, don't try make, to make decision for the council.
I did not.
There is.
At the end of the December fifteenth, no. At the end of the December fifteenth council meeting, you all allowed me to send the information out first before determining whether there would be another study session. Please go watch the tape.
Hmm.
Okay, no more free-for-all. All right? Um, I, I, I think, I think we're, we're, we're definitive on that. And then, uh, Councilmember Willie, Councilmember Moore, Council, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, you've all exhausted your three minutes. Uh, Councilmember Wei?
So, I, I would like to, um, really receive the comprehensive information first so that we, I can read through all of them and then get an understanding of it before requesting a, uh, well, a study session or on the, on the, uh, on the agenda. So, I really appreciate the information first. That, that's what I need to say. Thank you.
Yeah, you have it, you have it.
Okay, y- you don't have any other reports or requests for future items?
No, no, um, I, I think we have a lot of things on the agenda that's coming up, and I love to learn, so I would like to you guys to set it up, and then I'm on a learning curve.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so, I, I, I see two things. I, I'm not gonna evade, um, your, your request for a study session. Um, I, I, I think, I think if we're looking at the future agenda items at this point, it's been clear, you've got multiple people. Um, I know that March is getting to be pretty busy. I'm looking at April at this point. Um, work with us, give us some time, or give staff some time. I'm, I'm not aligning myself with, with any kind of, um, you know, positioning there. But give staff some time to give you that baseline information. Um, absorb it. Uh, please, try to communicate it to the people that reach out to you. Um, I think we can have a, a good faith informational session and a discussion. Um, and, uh, what I'm looking at right now is probably somewhereabouts in the timeframe of April. Probably no sooner, frankly. All right, second item, I did, um, so, so, yes, the city attorney is right. Um, two council members can place an item on our items of interest, and not, not, or our future agenda items, rather. Um, I, as mayor, working together with the city manager, uh, determine the timing of that item. Now, um, I, I did ask for, uh, this lobbying registration requirement. It was very popular. It indeed did get, uh, four out of five of our council members. Um, i- i- in my last meeting with, with staff and setting the agendas for this meeting and our next meeting, I did ask about that. Uh, I made a request that this show up, um, on our February second meeting. Uh, I have not heard anything prior to our discussion right now with regard to why this would be delayed and to what time. And so, that is my question. Um, why is?
We're on track to make February second. That's our goal, too.
Delayed, I just think there's more complications. So, it can come to February second. We might delay implementation, we might suggest a few things, but it'll come to February, on February second.
Okay, okay, so that was my question, um, and?
I need a, I need a point of clarification. Uh, Councilmember Moore suggested a modification to balcony sizes. I didn't hear a second.
I think we were checking to see if that's already on the work program or not. And we'll get back on that.
If it's not, I second that because I do think it's something that's gonna continue to grow.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. And, Councilmember Willie, you have your hand up still. Um, although, you know, I, I will say, everyone's pretty much exhausted their time, um, with the possible exception of Councilmember Wei, if she wants to, you know, allocate any, uh, to the rest of us. Um, however, um, I wanna congratulate everyone. You know, our, our original timing for this was eleven oh five, although we did take out two items. Uh, I think you have to give back a little for the fact that our postponements themselves, uh, involve elaborate discussions. Uh, so, we're before midnight, as, as I promised. Um, so, thank you for working with me there. Um, unless there are last burning things that you wanna tell the public, and I mean within thirty seconds at the very most. I see a, a head shake from John, which is great, Councilmember Willie, rather. Um, I, I wanna reiterate my thanks. Um, we're going to, uh, reconvene on February second. And so, um, I will go ahead and adjourn, uh, this meeting until our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Thank you very much, and good night.